Regular meeting for city council at this point, I'm calling the meeting to order. Let's all stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
Sorry, Ms. Madam Mayor, I believe we have a sanitation meeting first. We ran a little over. I apologize.
Okay, so let us first do our sanitation meeting.
Yes.
Everyone here for the sanitation meeting?
Okay.
Okay, let's call to order the meeting prior to our regular meeting. And maybe have a roll call please.
Mr. Giovanni? Mr. Giovanni? Mr. Ventura?
Here, present.
Mrs. Sylvester?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present. Thank you very much. Is there approval of the minutes for the last meeting?
Approval of the minutes for the last meeting? Motion to approve?
For a second.
Second?
In favor?
Aye.
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 Madam Mayor, I believe we can do the reorganization of the board of directors before we can get into the regular agenda. But we will accept the approval of the minutes.
Wonderful, so we have to do the reorganization. Let me just pull that up right now.
Sure.
We'll now move on to the reorganization for the board of directors. And entertain a motion for the election of the chair.
Move to.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to nominate Mayor Justin Manalo as the chair.
Second. Can't hear you, Madam Mayor.
For a second, Councilmember Buena Ventura. All in favor or do we close for nomination and see if there's any other?
If there are no other nominations, Madam Mayor, you can close nominations.
Okay, are there any other nominations for the floor? If none, we'll be closing it. Hearing none? Okay, moving on, may we have a roll call please?
Mr. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mrs. Sylvester?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
To the election of the vice chair. Entertaining a motion for an election for vice chair for the Northern San Mateo County Sanitation District.
Move to elect Dr. Roderick Dasmabualas Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
Can't hear.
Can't hear you, Madam Mayor. Just need to move closer. Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna try to get really closer. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, I guess the speaker is connected. Alright, okay. Sorry. We'll get this coordinated. Better?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. As we get technical difficulties, we'll make sure to get all the technicalities figured out at the next meeting, but this is loud and clear?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. And so now, I think we have a roll call at this point.
Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mrs. Sylvester?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much. We have already approved the minutes and now move on to action items for staff for the sewer service charge appeals for fiscal 2020 to 2021, and I believe we have staff, Mr. Joshua Cosgrove.
Madam Mayor, this is also on the consent agenda, so you could just take a general motion on a for the consent agenda, which is also item number two.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Good.
We can take a voice vote. I believe I heard a second.
Yeah, I don't think we can hear you.
We can't hear you.
Favor for this, say aye.
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 Now, are there any public appearances or oral communications?
Let me refresh the page really quickly. Not for this meeting.
Thank you very much, Stephen. From my board of directors, colleagues. Seeing none, any from staff?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Number 14th regular meeting for Daily City Council. Can you all hear me? Just making sure I'm clear and loud.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So at this point, we call this meeting to order. Maybe I'll rise for
Flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, there were deep injustice for all. How are we muted? Not sure why we were muted. That's weird.
Thank you very much, everyone. I may may have roll call please.
Madam Mayor, I'll be sitting in for Annette until the city clerk is able to join us. Ms. Giovanni?
Aye.
Present.
Present.
Oh, thank you. Dr. Dasmabual?
Present.
Mr. Buena Ventura? Mr. Sylvester?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Now, I entertain a motion for the regular meeting of November 23rd, 2020. Is there a second?
Second?
By Councilmember DG Giovanni, all in favor, say aye.
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 And now we are moving on to the approval of our agenda. I've entertained a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Sylvester. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Buena Ventura. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Aye.
Thank you. After get used to the lag in the digital world. Okay, and now I'm entertaining a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, are we able to pull an item?
What is, what are the items you want to pull?
I pull item number one and number four.
Madam Mayor, I will amend my motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of items number one and four.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester. So there is a friendly amendment to, you know, take one and four off the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, moving on. Let's move on to number one, notice of completion for the Geller Park Renovations Playground Equipment Installation. And I believe that will be directed to you.
Need a, can you give me some?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Congratulations. The item before you tonight is the notice of completion for the Geller Park renovation playground equipment installation. This work is part of the Measure K grant that you are all aware of. The Measure K grant includes adding a new ADA compliant restroom building. Also, it includes replacement of the existing playground equipment, renovation of the existing barbecue area in replacement of the existing tennis and basketball courts, light fixtures to LED. This specific item is just for the playground equipment installation. On February 10th of this year, council authorized the city manager to execute an agreement with Landscape Structures Incorporated to install a new playground equipment at Geller Park. Landscape Structures Incorporated has completed all improvements required by the agreement for a total amount of This includes some amendments totaling $46,405.98. The increase in cost were due to additional payments and performance bonds cost also for additional work to install a new water line and also to replace some existing concrete flatwork and curb work. Upon authorization by the city council, the notice of completion will be recorded and retention payments will be released after the noticing period has been completed. The contract was completed in the total amount of $383,885.18. With funds available from the fiscal year 1920 Capital Project Fund, Geller Recreation Project. And the cost will be reimbursed from the Measure K grant funds. So in summary, Landscape Structure has completed all work described in the agreement and the work is now acceptable for city maintenance. Staff is recommending that the city council authorize the filing of the notice of completion and accept the completed improvements for city maintenance. That concludes the presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chu, for the explanation you had and really all your hard work on this important renovation and use for our constituents and residents and even people that visit us as far as Geller Park. Councilmember DG Giovanni, you pulled this item and right now I yield the floor to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a real quick one, I guess the mayor covered it already. So this is the last phase, Mr. Chu, of the whole thing? First of all, thank you. It's beautiful over there. This is it?
No, it's not it. We still have the restroom building to be installed and council did authorize the ward of contract already. So we'll probably be getting that underway right after the holidays.
That's perfect. And then on time and then, but so we'll be able to hopefully celebrate this monumental thing during COVID, it'd be after next year, like 2021 when we come back, return. That'd be great. Yeah, but thank you for, and thank everybody that worked on it and thank you, Madam Mayor, because in that way we are, like you said, are we letting them know that this is a great positive thing in our city and that our children are going to be hopefully healthy to play in a safe playground and then when they, when we can return, which hopefully will be soon. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chu. Thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues about item number one? Seeing none, I make, I will motion to approve the for Geller Park Renovations Playground Equipment. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, thank you, Councilmembers Sylvester, that's the second. And we, do we have, since we pulled it, we, do we have to do a roll call vote or voice? Except from our staff? Attorney Zimmerman, do we need to do, because we pulled?
You have a voice vote on this.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, authorization and application for an receipt of local early action planning grant program, LEAP funds.
I believe it, Madam Mayor, pardon me. I thought it was item number four?
That you know number four?
I believe so.
Yes, no, it is item number four.
Thank you, thank you, Attorney.
Sorry, I heard item number six.
No worries.
As far as that, the item number four is approving consolidated annual performance evaluate valuation report for the fiscal year 2019-2020 for the one-year action plan. And I think yield to staff on this report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. So each year we prepare a CAPR, the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, which summarizes the accomplishments that have been reached with the 1920 CDBG and home funds. So it's a requirement of HUD that we submit a report on the use of the CDBG and home funds in the past fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. And a draft copy of the CAPR was presented for council review. During fiscal year 1920, the city of Daily City expended a total of $943,073 in CDBG funds and $28,009 in home funds. And the staff report summarizes some of the accomplishments, which include minor household repairs and accessibility improvements provided to low-income households and 33 children receiving subsidized childcare services. Was there a specific question relating to?
First of all, thank you, Lynell. Thank you, Ms. Mothershead, and for those that worked on this. No, I just want to make sure because people were asking exactly, you know, like when they see these things they had inquired because when they look into the documents, but they, thank you for clarifying that the CDBG funds are something that we help the community with and is not really anything that comes out of pocket for us. It's how we allocate them. So I just, I wanted to reiterate that and it did go to the, our low income and for people that are in need of that and because they, they don't know that these things actually go on in our city as far as, they've heard the terms and they know that there, there's action on that, like we had that meeting at one time based on the demographics and making sure that people have all the equality issues and that I see in the report when they read it. So I wanted to commend you guys on the distribution and the equity part because I did get feedback from the community and they were very pleased and seeing that they were actually used in that manner of equity and for things that are really viable, especially during this COVID time and that people are in need and know going forward there will be a much more need. I understand that. But I'm getting that feedback to let you know that that was important, that the CDBG funds are vital. They actually are vital for our community. Appreciate the distribution done with equity. Thank you very much for the equity part. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes.
Thank you very much. If the good team for your explanation of that. And at this moment, if there are no other comments from my colleagues, I entertain a motion to approve this item.
Motion to approve item number four?
Second.
Can we have a voice vote please? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. The motion passes. So moving on to our next agenda item. Back on here, we have our public hearing. And we have you again at the forefront, Lynell. So wonderful, you didn't have to go way too far. So please report on item number eight.
Okay, so good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Before I want to, before I begin, I just want to apologize for a typo in the staff report heading. This hearing is for the FY 21-22 funds, not FY 19-20. I just had another item that dealt with the 1920 CAPR and that must have carried over to the staff report. So I just want to clarify and I apologize for that typo. This is a 21-22 needs hearing. Okay, so the city receives Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and home funds annually from the Department of Housing and Urban Development to help lower-income households. CDBG funds may be used for program administration, housing, public services, capital improvements and economic development. And home funds may be used for affordable housing such as tenant-based rental assistance or affordable housing development. We do not yet know how much we will be getting in FY 21-22. For reference, in 2021, the city received $1,074,661 in CDBG and $380,743 in home funds. As a requirement to receiving this fund, the city prepares a five-year consolidated plan that identifies housing and community development needs and goals for addressing those needs. The consolidated plan goals are briefly summarized in the staff report. So for each year during the planning period, the city prepares an annual action plan that allocates how the CDBG and home funds for the program year will be spent. So tonight is the first step in beginning the process for the FY 21-22 Annual Action Plan, which is the fourth year of the consolidated plan, but also the second year of a two-year CDBG funding cycle. So it being the second year of a two-year CDBG funding cycle, we do not issue a general RFP for the CDBG funds. Programs and activities that are currently receiving funds in FY 2021, provided as attachment A to the staff report, may have their contracts renewed for FY 21-22 pending the availability of CDBG funds and satisfactory progress towards meeting their FY 2021 goals. Hope I'm not confusing with the different program years. So our community participation process for the action plan consists of two public hearings, the one tonight and another in April. So tonight's hearing is for the purpose of providing the public an opportunity to inform the council on housing and economic development needs in our city. The public hearing in April is to receive comments on the draft 21-22 action plan, which would include a proposed allocation for the 21-22 funds. So notice of this hearing was published in the examiner and was made available on the city's website. Oops. Sorry, my light goes off sometimes. As well as email to various community organizations. So the public notice also included mention of $1,444,763 in CDBG CV3 funds allocated to the city. These funds are separate from our normal CDBG allocation. These funds are specifically to, specifically to help prevent, prepare for, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. As such, you may also receive comments tonight relating to these funds that are specific to responding to COVID-19. So staff will return to council early next year with the recommendation for the CDBG CB, CB3 funds and a public hearing will be required. Prior to tonight, I received two written comments, which I believe the council has also received from DC4BL and Hip Housing. And with that, I'm available to provide additional information.
In regards to the community development and housing needs, at this point, I will ask my colleagues if they have any questions regarding your report and then we will move into opening and closing the hearing. Seeing none. For my colleagues, I entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Ever first? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a second. So at this point, are there, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this item, Susan?
Mayor, I have two comments from our virtual webpage. The first one is from Nick Ochi Pinti. It says, "Housing and urban development are as critical as ever as we close out 2020. As Daily City continues to navigate housing needs amidst a pandemic and budget issues that have hit our community among the hardest in San Mateo County, we have to find ways to reimagine our community development that go beyond selling out land to the highest bidder. We need more affordable housing. We do not need more high-priced housing developments that promote gentrification, especially those looking to develop beachfront property in our city. Thornton Beach is not undeveloped land. It is some of the last of our beautiful natural environment and coast and should be respected and preserved out of respect for past, present, and future generations. We as a city and community should not be seriously considering bids to extend development of the Thornton Beach area. This is especially critical to consider when we are discussing environmental impacts on the indigenous land, stolen land, which our city has been built on, a lonely land. This is a public hearing about community development. Community development and housing needs begin with the community. The community has not been consulted on this matter and given the danger to the environment and our coastline, including legal action by the state around privatizing public beaches. I know that I speak with many and strongly advising the council to reject any further encroaching on our city's land, beaches, and community trust. Thank you." Thank you." Okay. And the next one. Is from Evelyn Benitez from Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. It says, "COVID nineteen has brought tremendous hardship on tenants in Daly City. Loss of income, lack of childcare and illness have impacted low-income households the hardest. Eviction is the number one issue brought to us by Daly City tenants right now. In October, courts reopened to process eviction filings and the sheriff resumed lockouts in November. Even with current state law protections that limit some evictions for non-payment of rent and a federal CDC eviction moratorium, we see as many eviction filings now as we did in January twenty-twenty. A wave of evictions will almost certainly compound the anticipated wave of infections in our community, in our country, county, sorry, simultaneously, with effects that will be felt in the community and local economy for years. We urge you to be proactive in preventing this harm. Three areas where focused efforts and resources can make a difference. First, be ready to adopt local protections for tenants when and if the state legislators and federal government fall short. You have the power to tailor local measures that address local needs, mitigate the hardship of vulnerable residents and preserve public health. Secondly, please continue to support our Home Savers Program at Legal Aid to continue to prevent evictions and reach tenants in need. Lastly, continue to support the Safety Net Services currently connecting Daly City residents with basic needs. Agencies like Daly City Community Center and Second Harvest Food Bank. These agencies can help families by connecting them to resources like legal assistance, financial counseling, government benefits and immigration help. Thank you for your careful consideration of these community needs. That is the final comment.
Thank you very much, Stephen, for those comments and to the community members that leave them. Have this opportunity to hear from the public.
So move.
Second.
Thank you very much. So now the hearing is closed. People now move on to, uh, oh, it's a adoption for resolution by roll call. So, um, at this point, uh, is there anyone that'd like to adopt the resolution? I entertain a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, we have a first to adopt the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second, uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much. The resolution passes unanimously. Now moving on to item number nine. Thank you very much, Lanell, for, uh, that presentation. Uh, item number nine is the general plan amendment GPA eleven dash nineteen dash zero one four three, three, one. Zone change VC dash eleven dash nineteen dash zero one four three, three, two. And design review, um, DR dash eleven dash nineteen dash zero one four three, three for the Jefferson Elementary School District Faculty and Staff Housing Project at three oh five Eastmore Avenue. And, um, at this point, uh, we have, uh, staff with Ms. Morales to present.
Thank you, Mayor Manalo. Good evening, everyone. Um, I will just go ahead and share my screen. Stephen, it looks like the host disabled participant.
I just allowed it.
Okay, thank you. Great. Okay, I just want to confirm that everyone can see the presentation. Thank you. Um, so yes, I will be presenting on the project at three oh five Eastmore Avenue, which is for the Jefferson Elementary School District Faculty and Staff Housing Project. Okay, so, uh, this is, this shows, this actually is the site location. I'm sure many of you know where the MP Brown Elementary School campus is located. Um, and this site will be, um, just east of the school camp or the school location. Um, as you can see, it's surrounded by a mix of uses from residential to commercial and it's a very close to the two eighty highway. Um, just some background information on this project. Uh, as, as I'm sure you all know, um, it is difficult to attract and retain highly qualified teachers during this time, especially, um, within, um, this district and, um, community, uh, due to the critical shortage of affordable rental housing. And through measure U in twenty, that was approved in twenty eighteen, Jefferson Elementary School District was authorized to, um, to include their, it was, I think the, the measure U and voters are authorized thirty million in locally controlled bond funding, part of which will be used to construct affordable rental housing. So that measure allowed JESD to, um, to move forward with this type of project. Um, so with this project, um, it aims to address the issue of the, of not having as much affordable housing available. Um, and it will be for JESD faculty, staff members and their families. Um, so this photo shows an aerial view of the project site. As you can see, the school is on their left. Um, and then the project site will be at an open, uh, what is currently an existing athletic, um, playfield. Um, here's some site photos. So this is some, some street view photos on Eastmore Avenue when you're facing the project site. And here are some photos, um, from Pier Street. So you, as you can see, there's a very different elevation. Um, and in, in all, all the photos, you can see the tree canopy that's surrounding the project site. Uh, so for the project overview, um, this project consists of fifty-six apartments within six to two and three-story buildings. Um, and there is a central courtyard, um, which will include a community building, some outdoor amenities, um, which include a place structure and a community garden, to name a few. Um, the maximum height is about thirty-six feet. Um, there will be lots of open space area, um, including some open lawn areas and central courtyards, um, some restored hillside habitat. And a total of ninety-seven parking spaces are provided and will be along the loop road that will go along the perimeter of the building, of the buildings on the project site. Um, the next few slides will be, um, of the project plans, which you can find in attachment, um, I believe ARB in the staff report. Um, so this is the site plan. So you can see the loop road, um, right around, that goes around the, the buildings. And then the main entrance will be on the bottom left. And that is also an access point to get into the school campus or to get into the school site. Here is a landscape plan. You can see, um, all the vegetated areas that are proposed. Um, and the central card right in the middle, court area right in the middle. Um, and this is the ground floor plan. Um, so you'll see the various heights that are proposed. So along the bottom and left and right sides, you have the lower height buildings. Here's the second floor, still the same heights. And then the third floor, you see, um, against Pier Street are the, um, the, the three-story buildings proposed. Um, so there are a lot of different, um, building elevations proposed. I'll go through each one of them, um, briefly. So this is building one, um, there are elevations that are proposed. And this is a two-story building. This is building two, the three-story building that's, um, along Pier Street. Uh, building three, also another three-story building. Building four, a two-story building. And as you can see, there's, um, there's a theme in terms of the colors and some earth tones and a lot of woodwork um, and the decking and the staircases. Um, and this is building number five, a two-story building. Building six, another two-story building. And then lastly is building seven, which is the community center. Um, and it'll be a one-story building, um, has a really nice roofline, interesting roofline. Um, and that will be located in the central courtyard. Um, and here are a couple of, um, renderings provided by the applicant. You can see the varying heights. Um, there's an existing, uh, solar carport on the left side and then the tree canopy that will sort of screen the, um, the project site from the adjacent streets. Here's a profile view. And then this is an, a shot of the community center. And then in front of it is a, a sort of like a place structure area. I'm in an open lawn area right in front. And here's a detail of one of the buildings, one of the three-story buildings. Um, so just to go over, um, a few of the zoning regulations that are applicable to this project. There's a lot of access that has been proposed, um, both for vehicles and for pedestrians. And I will, it, it'll be secured by entry and exit gates that are at the, uh, the main entrance. Um, as I mentioned before, there is a loop road. It will start off as a two-way driveway, um, and then transition into a one-way driveway, um, at the northeast corner. Um, and there are various pedestrian walkways that, um, are provided along the perimeter of the project site. And lastly, um, the project does comply with the parking requirement of ninety-seven spaces, um, which does not require any parking exemptions or anything like that. Um, and this, um, site plan shows the pedestrian pathways that I mentioned. Um, you see them on the left side, that's the main entrance. On the right side, it connects onto Eastmore Avenue and this is for pedestrians. Um, and then the one on the left side is, um, access to the school site. Um, as for the proposed general plan and zoning amendments, um, the proposed density is twenty-three dwelling units per acre. To allow this project, um, a general plan amendment is required. So the land use designation would change from public facilities to residential medium density. Um, and that is just to allow the proposed density. As for the rezoning, um, this project or this project site is located within the Sullivan corridor. It will stay within this Sullivan corridor. Um, it's just shifting from public facilities to residential high density just because, um, it is now going to become a residential, um, development. Um, but the remainder of the campus, um, which is remainder of the property will still remain, um, a public school use. So that zoning and, um, general plan designation will not change. Um, this project does require a designer view permit. As you saw in the elevations and the renderings, there's various shed roof styles. A lot of mixes of colors and siding types. Um, and they do have a unique wicket, wood picket fence design for the balconies and the railings. Um, the project does include, um, site improvements and landscaping. Um, and I also mentioned that the trees have the tree cover, the existing tree cover and the, the topography does allow for the, uh, project site to be properly, um, screened from the streets, uh, where the adjacent streets, um, and the buildings in general are generally in line with the proposed, with the heights and the uses, um, within the surrounding vicinity. So mostly residential and some commercial. Um, so this project as a, as a residential project does, um, does have to comply with affordable housing ordinance, um, which requires ten percent of all of the rental units to be, um, affordable, um, according to the county standards, um, which would be six units for this. But since this is a faculty and staff housing project, JSD does intend to price the units at twenty-eight percent below market rate. So generally affordable, but ten percent will definitely meet the requirement, um, of the county, the city. Um, so this project is, um, within the airport influence area B, which is, um, a part of the airport land use compatibility plan. Generally, it will, it had to go through their review process, the CCAG board review process. And on October fifteenth, they approved it and said that it conforms. So basically the height is at, um, a, a level that is adequate and inconsistent with the ALUCP policies. Um, for the environmental assessment, um, David J. Powers and Associates did prepare an initial study for this project and it was determined that a mitigated negative declaration is appropriate. Um, the review period was from November thirteenth to December third, and there were no comments received. Um, in the Stafford report, you'll find the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which outlines the mitigation measures and for this project. Um, there is one correction to the staff report. It is to an engineering division condition of approval. It's just a slight change. They realized that one of the easements was incorrectly named, so they're just making that adjustment to, um, condition of approval sixty-five. Um, so these are, is a summary of the findings that you can find in the staff report. Basically that it complies with zoning regulations is consistent with the zoning code. Um, and it is consistent with the secret requirements, um, and general architecture considerations were, were, um, proposed and, and are in, um, and ensures the compatibility of this development with its sign concept. Um, so that concludes my presentation. The recommendations that were recommended by the planning commission are outlined here, which is to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report, to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the MMRP, and then to approve the general plan amendment, zone change and design review subject to the conditions of approval identified in the staff report. Um, that concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions. If I may, I, I do know that the, um, that JSD wants to make a presentation. If so, if they can do that right after mine's, um, please let me know and I'll transition to their slides.
Thank you very much, Morales, for that extensive, um, presentation on this affordable housing plan by the Jefferson Elementary School District. Um, at this point, I know you mentioned that there is a representation from the JESD. I would like to speak and is it, uh, Superintendent Bernie Vidalis? Will you be speaking?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Morales, if you didn't mind, uh, putting up the slide.
Okay. Are you able to see it?
Yeah.
And I could just transition for you. Just let me know.
I have my notes on my computer somewhere and I lost that. All right, here we go. All right. So, um, as you know, my name is, uh, Mr. Bernie Vidalis. I'm superintendent of the Jefferson Elementary School District. And, and I want to thank the members of the, um, the council of the city of Daly City. And I want to thank Daly City staff for this opportunity to address you tonight and to introduce you to this very exciting project that we've been working on now for close to, well, more than three years before, um, we passed measure U, um, just over two years ago. Um, slide two, please. So the Jefferson Elementary School District, with the support of the city of Daly City, has an opportunity to build this fifty-six unit faculty and staff workforce housing for employees of the Jefferson Elementary School District. This would be the first project of its kind in San Mateo County and maybe even the Bay Area or even California for a kindergarten through eighth grade school district. It would be the second project for a public school district in San Mateo County and would bookend the Jefferson Union High School District's project nicely at the other end of St. Francis Boulevard. With this project, the city of Daly City has an opportunity to make history, being the only jurisdiction in San Mateo County with two faculty and staff housing projects within its boundaries. Both projects, as you know, are integral in supporting our goal to attract and retain highly qualified staff to serve the students in Daly City amid the high cost of living in this area. We anticipate between fifty-six and seventy employees to live in these units that are arranged in the six buildings, surrounded by a central court, surrounding a central courtyard, equipped with a community room and what we call a hot spot play area. As the development is right next to the school site, families with older children will be able to use the school playground when it's not in use by the students. Slide three, please. This project has many tangible and intangible benefits in addition to those that are already mentioned. Principally, this project will provide a respite for staff from housing instability caused by sudden rent increases or surprise eviction notices that are enabled by the high demand for rental housing in the area. The additional units of rental housing that will be provided by this project, when added to those of the Jefferson Union High School District's project, have the potential to relieve some of the strain on rental housing in the Daly City area so that more residents of Daly City can benefit from relief from some of these practices enabled by high demand, low supply of units in the rental market. As mentioned, our units will be pr- pr- priced close to thirty percent below market rates. We will go higher if we can, um, enabling more staff to live closer to work. The project also meets the Daly City affordable housing requirements for more than the required units. This project has potential to incorporate more of our staff integrally, integrally into the fabric of Daly City economically, socially, as well as strengthening a middle class that is all but disappearing in many Bay Area neighborhoods. Next slide. This project incorporates many environmental friendly features as well, things that I'm personally, I'm excited about. It will be equipped with solar panels, generating cleaner energy for use on the property. This is in addition to the electricity generated by the existing solar panels for use at the school site. The parking lot will be equipped with electric vehicle charging stations, making it a possibility for residents to consider a cleaner, greener choice in vehicle with the convenience of charging at home, an option that's not regularly offered to renters. The project is centrally located and walking distance from the Colma Bart Station, enabling trips to San Francisco and Peninsula destinations without use of a vehicle. The project will also be interspersed with several bike lockers throughout, so that residents who wish can bike to work for recreation or other activities, making full use of the planned bike thoroughfares that are being constructed around Daly City. Next slide. We are very excited to offer this opportunity to partner with the city of Daly City to not only make history by approving a first of its kind project for a kindergarten through eighth grade school district in our county, but also continuing to invest in our community students and families and also in our residential community. We are hopeful that this project, three years in the making, has the components to help our school district contribute to the fabric of this community by explicitly embedding more of our employees in the community we serve. I want to thank you for your time and your attention to this, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation and really expanding on some of the aspects of the project, which is wonderful to see around, even around sustainability and the environment in that respect. So at this point, are there any other comments that you'd like to ask Jefferson Elementary School District Representative, Superintendent Vidalis, since he's here with us today? I open it up to my colleagues.
Mayor, I do have a few, if I may. Did I come through okay? Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Morales and of course Superintendent Mr. Vidalis on the additional information. I actually had six questions. And Mr. Vidalis, you covered two of them in your presentation. So just so everyone should know, I was going to ask about solar, and you answered that. And the next thing I was going to ask was the E V infrastructure. You covered that, because as we all know, by the year twenty thirty five, you will not be able to buy an ice vehicle, and we are looking for sustainability for the future. So excellent job in forethinking and putting that information out. The questions I have, the beginning of the slide in the presentation made mention about faculty and staff. And then I heard employee. So my question is, who would be able to basically avail themselves? I understand, I know who faculty is, but what about employee and staff? Who do those consist of in the school district?
Well, every faculty and staff are all employees. So any employee of the school district would be able to avail themselves of this opportunity.
Excellent.
From, you know, a maintenance worker in the maintenance yard to a school teacher to school principal.
Perfect, perfect. I see how you crafted it very nicely regarding the only one in the state, but the elementary school district, as we are following up on the high school district. Outstanding, okay. Who will get? The next question is, we have moved in Daly City towards the use or the non-use of natural gases, and we subsequently support an ordinance for electric, electric appliances. Would that be the case in these units?
Yes, I believe, and perhaps Mr. Heath, you can confirm. Certainly, all the heating elements will be electric. I believe the water heaters will be electric. So I don't think we'll be having any natural gas in the buildings, but Mr. Heath, would you like to confirm?
Yes, there is, thank you. That's a great question. There is no natural gas planned on being piped into this site. The, the, the water heaters and any other appliances and will be electric.
Outstanding, very good, thank you. And then I saw something, this is the last question in the slides, that we are adhering to the county's requirement of ten percent. Now, I, I think it's my understanding Daly City was twenty percent, but maybe that would only apply to ownership. So perhaps it's different for rentals. So these are going to be rental units rather than ownership units, is that correct?
I can chime in on that. Yes, for rental projects, the requirement is ten percent while ownership is twenty. So they are in compliance as a rental project.
Wow, very good, thank you, everyone. That's all I have. I'm very excited, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell Mester, for those questions. Comment from my colleagues.
Madam Mayor?
Bonnie, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Vidalis and Ms. Morales for the great presentation. It's great to see that this is like moving forward. You know, full disclosure, I was really happy to see it at C CAG. I'm the representative there for Daly City. It just turned out that that got a unanimous support there. And for people to know, like in her report, I'm also the representative at the Perry Port Land Use. So at that particular time, I wanted people to know at home and here to applaud you for that project to go through with the compatibility according to the policies. And Mr. Heath, it conformed to everything that they asked for. And because they're in particular that that's what you have to vote for, for the airport. And you guys did an excellent job on the design in that matter. And Michael and Tatum and everyone that worked on it, fabulous job. And so that, that was an easy way to, like even for tonight. And Mr. Vidalis, I know that you guys have a tot lot. Do you ever, and I'm sure this is something you can think down the road, consider because of school, any type of integrating, any childcare of any type in some manner, maybe moving forward, that might be something that, you know, you could think about for your teachers or your staff members to have it on the, on the ground, so they'll know where their children are, maybe for childcare, whether it's in this or in the school.
We don't have thoughts of it here at this location. We just don't have, we don't have the space for it.
Oh, okay.
But it is a thought that is on our mind, and we're looking for partners, mostly on capital for building, you know, you know, as you know, preschool and nursery care is in high demand in Daly City.
Yes.
Certainly is in high demand among our employees as well. So that would be something we could look into in the future.
Now, maybe somebody out there is listening, right? And knowing that we need this here in Daly City, and if, but a great project. I like the fact that as the, as Councilmember Sylvester alluded to, it not only does have sustainability, like the modular aspect of it, because I don't think we've had something like that before, and that that was a great choice. And that as well, and the design, the sensitivity to the surrounding areas was very notable. So I appreciate that. And thank you for, it's great that we, people can work together as a community. So thank you, thank you all, thank you, J E S D.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from my colleagues?
Yes. Ms. Mayor, can I, Madam Mayor, can I speak?
Please.
Okay. I want to thank Superintendent Vidalis and Ms. Morales for putting together a very thorough presentation. I have a quick question. By creating this project, does that reduce any type of programming from MP Brown Elementary?
No, it does not. As you know, as you see, it is on a, on a field there. It's been overtaken by gophers. So it essentially become unusable, unless you want to walk out of there with some sprained ankles.
Okay, all right. I think that was the only question I have, but I just have one more comment. I'm just glad to be in a city where we support workforce development housing, especially for educators, both at Jefferson Union High School District and Jefferson Elementary School District. And it is so, so crucial to provide housing for both the faculty and the staff to kind of see where their students are coming from, to see the bus lines are that the students take, to smell the same air that they experience, to see the fog roll in. I think there is something about living and working in the same place where your community is from that gives this sense of empathy, this sense of pride to represent a community where you work at. So I am fully supportive of this project and as educator myself, just really proud of a city that is supporting these type of projects. Thank you again.
Vice Mayor Dasmog Ball, I see Councilmember Raina Ventura on the screen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Vidalis, I was just curious, how similar or different is this project from the J U S High School District project? And that's one question. The other one is, what in terms of how long a, you know, a teacher or whoever, is there a time commitment that you have for them to stay or not stay? And what are the, the sizes of a family that could potentially move into there? And then the third question is, does the site or the building or whatever, this, the space, is it shareable with the community in any way? Are there opportunities for the community to share the space somehow, whether or not it's a community room or a playground? Or, or is it considered, you know, sort of an exclusive area for the, for the residents who live there? Those are my questions, thank you.
All right, let's see if I can get, get, see if I can remember. The first one is, how is it similar or different than the High School District's project? I'm not as familiar with the High School District's project as I am with this one. It does appear that the High School District does have maybe greater density in their units. They're higher, and I think there are more floors in their units. We have, our highest building is three stories. I think they might have four in all of their buildings. There, the, there is what's called, people call stick built, that's being constructed from the floor up onsite. And ours will be modular, constructed offsite and assembled onsite. So it'll be like a Lego project. You'll see nothing, and then suddenly you'll see buildings the next, you know, in a week. So that, that's, and I forget how many they have. I think they might have double what we're, what we, what we have. They might have close to a hundred.
Yeah, it's over a hundred, I think it's like one twenty two.
Yeah, yeah. And I think they have, they used a greater, they used a whole bond for their construction, so they're able to bring their rental costs lower than we would be able to, because we're only using part of our bond to construct this. As far as the length of time residents could live there, that hasn't quite been decided. What we're modeling this after is what the Community College District has been doing with their faculty housing projects, governed by a local housing board that will make some of those decisions. I know that the Community College District started off with a five year limit, but then as that time approached, realized that nobody was able to move out after five years because housing costs were going crazy. They extended that. Our goal would be somewhere between five and seven years, depending on what we can work out with our, with our staff. We do have some three bedrooms, Mr. Buena Ventura, so I don't know, we've decided the maximum amount of people that can live in the, in the three bedroom. I would imagine how I grew up, probably not that many, but maybe in a three bedroom, you can probably fit two people in each bedroom comfortably. We are, at this point, you know, we haven't assembled the housing board, they haven't written their bylaws and their ways of governing themselves and the units. But I don't think that we will be restricting it to just that every adult in the house has to be related to each other. If they were, if other adults were also employees, if there were two or three teachers at a school site that wanted to share, you know, I think I, you know, we might be open to that. But I don't think we would have non-related adults share with employees. There would have to be some kind of a relationship involved for them to live in the unit with an employee.
Yeah, I think my final question was about shared spaces.
Shared spaces, again, that would be the governing, the housing board would decide that. We didn't design this for a shared space, we designed it for use by the residents. There isn't a lot of space. The community room is adjacent to a laundry room, so it would likely be used by the residents most of the time as they're doing laundry. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Raina Ventura. I'm clarifying those questions. And so, given the comments of my colleagues, I will state my comments now. I think Jefferson Elementary School District, this is a project that is most needed, and we know how valuable our teachers are as a graduate from J E S D. Some friends that our teachers have a place to, like, that is affordable. And then that the retention of these teachers remains, given the prices within the Bay Area. And so seeing this project come to the council and planning commission, et cetera, is really exciting. I think upon ending the year with so many things that have occurred throughout the year, but seeing this project come to the table is so important. I see how well thought out it is around even a sustainability. We all know the issues of parking, that's thought about as well. And it's just, it's just really enlightening to see this type of project come to the table. I know it's been, you know, a vision for a long time, right? And to see kind of the legwork happening and finally come to a place in which we are at this meeting. And so with that, I think now we will move into opening and closing the hearing. And then if there's any comments from our public at this point, is there are there, are there any comments from the public even? Get a motion to open the hearing?
A motion to open the hearing?
Okay, got a first and second. And are there now any comments from the public even?
There is one commentary, and it is from Clayton Koo. And it says, "Good evening, Mayor Manalo, Vice Mayor Dasmog Ball, member of the City Council and city of Daly City staff. My name is Clayton Koo, and I am a school board member of the Jefferson Elementary School District. I am addressing you tonight in support of the Jefferson Elementary School District workforce housing project located at three oh five Eastmore Ave. This is an important school district initiative that will help us recruit, attract, and retain high quality teachers and staff to ensure that all of our K through eight students can learn and thrive from the very best educators. This project will address some of the high costs of living locally for our hardworking staff with the construction of fifty six apartment units for our district teachers, staff, and families. Residents of this project will be able to enjoy open space, a community Residents of this project will be able to enjoy open space, a community center and be within minutes of all of our school sites. I would like to kindly ask the City Council, approve the general plan amendment, zone change and design review permits and litigated. Declaration as presented tonight. Thank you all and I appreciate your consideration of this project. That's the last comment.
That's the last comment. Colleagues, is there a first or second to close the hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Second.
Vice Mayor, thank you very much. Now our hearing is closed. At this point, we have a recommended action. For the, if there is a motion for City Attorney to read by title only. And may I have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Councilmembers Sylvester, seconded by Councilmember D G Giovanni. And so Attorney Rose Zimmerman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an ordinance of the City of Daly City amending the City. Daly City zoning map, rezoning existing two-point-four acre sites located at three oh five Eastmore Avenue. Daly City from the Sullivan Corridor. Public Facility Falls to Sullivan Corridor Residential High Density S C dash R H. And then we'll now entertain a motion for a council member to introduce the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
No second required for the introduction, Madam Mayor. Thank you. And now we will also entertain a motion to adopt the resolution regarding the general plan amendment.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you.
So I'm not hearing you very clearly. I'm Miss Mayor Manalo, I'm sorry. I don't know who introduced the. Ordinance.
A down city clerk. And then the adoption from resolution, the first was from Councilmember Buena Ventura. And the second was from Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you. And now you'd like a vote. Okay. Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Miss, Ms. D Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much to the partnership with the Jefferson Elementary School District. I want to commend the staff that has worked diligently on this. You know, Ms. Motherhead and Michael and also your whole team that really put the effort in. Working on a project like this and Superintendent Vidal is. Moving forward. We know that this is for the community cohesively as a whole and that. Our educational partners is so important as they serve our students. So thank you very much.
All right, getting business done this evening. We're at eight thirty-one. Moving on to our next agenda item, item number ten. Used permit U P R nine dash two zero. Zero dash zero one four six nine two, the coastal development permits. Geo-technical subsurface investigation at two one two Olympic Way. And we have the pleasure of having staff, Ms. Morales again, to present this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. Again, I just want to confirm you can see the presentation.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I will be presenting on this project at twenty-one fifty-two Olympic Way, which is where proposed geotechnical subsurface investigation. So this project is located west of Highway thirty-five, which is Glen Boulevard, adjacent to Olympic Way. To the west is some coastal bluffs in the Pacific Ocean, to the east is a residential neighborhood. There is a commercial site just north of it. It's Mar Vista Stables. To the south, there's a private parcel that's vacant and then a parking area for Thorn and State Beach. Some background on this project, the applicant Sand Hill Property Company did submit a development application in September twenty-nineteenth. And is to propose a retreat center. During the review of the application, we found that included two geotechnical feasibility reports. And they both concluded that more detailed studies need to be performed to better understand the site of specifically regarding geotechnical hazards. And after review with staff and coastal commission, the city is requiring that the studies be conducted prior to advancing with, through the, the review process. And has required that the studies include a subsurface and geotechnical investigation as well as a slope stability and bluff retreat analysis. So this photo shows an aerial view of the project site. You can clearly see the commercial site to the left and the trails both used by hikers and horses along the western property line. It is important to note for this project that it does not include any development, it's just for grading and geotechnical work. It is also entirely with the, within the private parcel, so it's not going to be touching any of the open space areas. Here are some photos of the project site from the street view, from the southwest corner and then from Olympic Way. And for the project itself, as mentioned, it is a geotechnical subsurface investigation. It will be used to develop a comprehensive geotechnical study that will determine the suitability of the site for the proposed retreat center. Again, it's not for the retreat center itself, it's just for the investigation. And this project requires a coastal development permit, not because the development is proposed, but. Through the city's local coastal program, it is considered grading and extraction of materials which requires a C D P. Lastly, there is a grading permit that's also required and concurrently being reviewed by the engineering division. As for the investigation, it will be conducted by N G O, which is the applicant's geotechnical consultant. N G O prepared one of the two reports that was submitted for the proposed retreat center project. And it includes six vertical borings, five test pits and then a trench. There's approximately three hundred fifty cubic yards of, of cut proposed, all the cut material will be put back into its original location. And vegetation will be removed as only, as necessary only. This is a snapshot of the survey, just to better understand where the property lines are. You can see Thornton State Beach is to the left and the property lines are just adjacent to it. And as mentioned in the staff report, the site plan has, has been modified slightly just to, to clearly show what the proposed work will look like. So right now, this is the original site plan that was proposed with the, at the planning commission meeting. And here is the revised site plan. The major changes are the, the trench you see in the blue long rectangle at the bottom of the site. It would just move slightly to the east to move out of the trail areas. And the horse and public access trail that cuts across through the private parcel is now shown. And it's also shown that the borings have been moved slightly to avoid these areas. And so this was in response to the feedback that was received during the planning commission meeting. Just to go into a little bit of detail on the, the, the different aspects of the project. So there are two borings that will be pretty deep from ten to two hundred fifty feet on and up to ten inches in diameter. It's, it's to gather data and understand bedding plane orientations and things like that. The four other borings will be used to figure out the foundation design for the proposed retreat center. As for the trench, it will be approximately five feet deep, five feet wide and three hundred to three hundred fifty feet long. It will be used to identify how cracking frequency changes near the bluff. It will also identify tension cracks and other recent features, so they can better understand landslide formations, if any. And N G O, the geotechnical consultant that will be conducting the investigation does not anticipate. Any potential rest of the stability of the bluff area with this trench method. As for the test pits, they're about five by five by five feet and it will be used for infiltration testing. And the geotechnical consultant, N G O, will be presenting briefly after my presentation, if you have any specific details on the technicalities of all of this. I know it's a lot to understand in the few slides. To go into the coastal development permit, this project site is zoned like commercial district with a resource protection combining district overlay. Which basically means that it's within the coastal zone. And any development that's within the coastal area does require a C D P. And as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, there's no structures or additions or any sort of development proposed, but because. The definition of development includes grading and extraction, a C D P is therefore required. As for compliance with the city's local coastal program, the staff determined that it wasn't compliance. There was a biological resources assessment submitted with the application. No plant, no special status plant species were observed, no sensitive natural communities, et cetera. And any potential for impacts to occur have been included as conditions of approval in the staff report. As for the environmental assessment. Staff has determined that the project is exempt. And is in accordance with the CEQA guideline section fifteen three oh three, which is information collection. It has been determined that it's not serious, it won't cause a serious or major disturbance to an environmental resource. And the information will be used for an eventual decision that hasn't been. Acted on by a public agency yet. Here is a brief summary of the findings in the staff report. That it's in compliance with CEQA and the local coastal program and zoning code. And lastly, this slide shows the planning commission's recommendations to the city council, which is to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report. Affirm the environmental assessment and approve the use permit subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report. I, that concludes my presentation, but I'm available to answer any questions that you might have. And I do know that Steve Lynch with Sand Hill Property would like to make a brief presentation after mine and be happy to transition to the slides when you're ready. Thank you.
My colleagues don't have any comments for, or questions for Ms. Morales at this moment. I will have Sand Hill present, but if there's any questions right on the spot and you don't want to wait, I will. Yield it to any of my colleagues that have any questions or comments. Being none. Let's have the representative from Sand Hill present. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I will put up the slides.
Yes, can, can you hear me okay, Carmelisa?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Steve Lynch. I'm with Sand Hill Property Company. With me here tonight are our geologic consultants from N G O, as well as our biologists from W R A and Associates. They're happy to answer any questions if you have. We do have a short presentation regarding some of the work that will be completed on the site. But very briefly, I will just add a couple of comments. And that's before we went under contract on these sites. So we don't own these sites today, but we are under contract. We, we too had similar concerns. When you look at, at the cliffs, you know, it's a natural sort of conclusion to wonder. Is this safe to build on? You know, what's the stability? There's, there's been a lot of news about these bluffs from San Francisco, you know, all the way down to Pacifica in the past. So as a result, we actually commissioned two entirely independent geologic reports. So both of them were concurrent. They studied our site as well as the Mar Vista site to the north of us. Because we wanted to understand what was happening below ground. You know, is this safe to occupy? Is this safe to build on? What, what's happening? And both reports entirely independently came to the same conclusion that in fact, both of the sites are safe to occupy and have buildings on. However, before they can conclude one hundred percent on the reports, they needed to understand what was happening below ground. They needed to see the geology to determine some of the characteristics underground before they can make that determination one hundred percent. So after we submitted to the city as part of the city's environmental process. They decided this both city staff, engineering, as well as the city's environmental consultant and coastal commission. All decided they wanted to see the second phase of the studies. They wanted to know what was happening below ground. As part of the secret process before they could, before we could move further into the application portion. So that's where we are today. I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit more background. And with that, I will turn it over to Nadine Periot from N G O to give you a little bit better understanding into the, the exact work we're doing. As well as the timeline for this work.
Great, thanks Steve and good evening, everyone. So my name is Nadine Periot. I'm a senior geologist with N G O and I just want to talk really briefly about what we're proposing to do with this geotechnical investigation. So the purpose is number one, to further characterize and evaluate the geotechnical hazards at the site as requested by both the Daly City and the California Coastal Commission. So this applies mostly to the deep soil borings and the exploratory trench. The second objective is to obtain site subsurface data that will later be needed for preliminary foundation design and percolation testing. In accordance with Daly City requirements and this more applies to the shallow soil borings and percolation test pits. Though both will aid in the first objective as well. And the investigation will be conducted during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, seven AM to five PM. Next slide. So we have five soil borings, I'm sorry, six soil borings proposed. One is to two hundred fifty feet, one is to one hundred fifty, one hundred feet. These are going to be the ones that we're going to use to try and determine depth to groundwater, bedding attitudes. And, and the different soil layers beneath the site. And then the other four will be a hundred, or I'm sorry, ten to, ten to fifty feet deep. And those will mostly be used for foundation design. All these borings will be permitted through Daly City Waste, Water and Wastewater Department. And so they'll be backfilled under regulatory oversight. The drilling will be performed by a truck-mounted drill rig. Which is, the noise is on par with about an idling semi-truck. No significant vibrations are anticipated from this drilling and it'll be, it'll last for about two weeks. Each location for the protection of the public will have about a seventy-foot wide by thirty-foot. Long exclusion zone. And just to protect the public and we'll only be using those exclusion zones while we're actually working those locations and those are shown in orange on the figure. Next slide. The exploratory trench, which Carmelisa did a really good job explaining, is shown in blue on this figure. It'll be roughly three hundred and fifty feet long, five feet wide, five feet deep. And the purpose is to look for cracking, bedding attitudes, slip surfaces. It'll be dug by a regular backhoe. The trench will be dug over the course of several days and then we will actually go into the trench. And we will look at the beddings, the bedding in the, in the different soil layers. To, to, to look for. Cracking, slip surfaces, et cetera, adverse bedding and that'll take about two weeks before we, before we backfill. And no significant vibrations are anticipated for that either. Next slide. So the test pits, they're, the purpose is just to do infiltration, infiltration testing per City of Daly City Development Permit requirements. And they're just five by five by five, dug by the same backhoe used for the trench and they'll take another, and they'll take also about two weeks to complete. And next slide. So these are just some graphics showing what we'll, we'll be dealing with. So the, there's an example of the exploratory trench. With a few people just in their hand logging the soils. The mud, the mud rotary drill rig that we'll be using has a staff of about thirty-five feet tall. It's truck-mounted, it's, there's nothing permanent. There's no permanent structures that we'll be installing for the drill rig. It's very mobile. And then the exclusion zones will be very visible to the public. I'm sure you've all seen the, the kind of snow fencing that's shown here. And with that, I conclude my short presentation.
And we're happy to answer any, any questions that Council has tonight. Thank you.
Going through some of the, what the testing entails. Yeah, at this point.
Yeah, at this point, I will ask my colleagues if they have any direct questions since Sand Hill is here. And also the, the work that the people that will do the work in regards to the geotechnical testing. And I see council member Ben Ventura, please, if you have any questions.
Yes, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe Carmelisa or who, or Steve or whoever wants to answer these questions, it's, it's fine. I'll just throw them out there. So I just want to be clear. So what you are asking us to approve is not whether or not we are agreeing to build on that piece of property, but you're asking us simply to approve the testing of that piece of property. Is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember Benaventura.
All right. And so with respect to the testing of the, the different forms of testing, you know, the, the concern I have is what, to put it simply, what damage will the testing do to that piece of land in Daly City? And whether or not it could be irreparable damage as a result of any kind of testing? Now, am I correct in understanding that in, you're working with the coastal commission in, in terms of how this, this testing is going to occur? Did the coastal commission have any objections to the actual testing of the site, to any forms of testing?
I will, I will jump in, councilman. So the coastal commission has actually required us to complete this work as a part of the environmental review process. So this is, this has come from both, both the city's environmental consultants, as well as the coastal commission. So they're on the same page. Really, I will just offer up the reason why we didn't do the phase two study. Because it's a good, a question you're probably getting to, is this very expensive. So this is, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars to get this work done. And we are hoping to sort of get more of this work done later on or after entitlement. So that's the only reason why we haven't done it to this point, just to be completely open with you. Our biologist is actually on, on the call today, Greg Sprouse from WRA. He can speak to your other question in terms of what's existing on the site today that we may be, you know, irreveribly damaging. So Greg, you wanted to talk about sort of fauna and flora issues?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Steve. So the site is composed of something called ice plants. It's a highly invasive species. The community is called Ice Plant Mats. So there is no sensitive community. There's no jurisdictional community. We did a wetland delineation out there as well, and we determined that there would be no impacts to anything of a sensitive nature.
So I, I thought I had read that, that you were going to remove some vegetation in doing some of the testing. Is that vegetation permanently removed? Or is that vegetation going to be restored to its original condition after the testing is done?
It will be put back into the original location and restored as best as they can. I mean, they will be removing the dirt and taking it off. So it won't look exactly like how it was before. But as Mr. Sprouse mentioned, they're, they're, it's an invasive species. So it's not taking away a sensitive habitat or a sensitive community within the project site.
Okay.
Yeah, due to the nature of that species, it will grow back very quickly.
Okay. And then with respect to the, the cost of the testing, so all the cost of the testing is going to be borne by your company and Daly City is not going to be responsible for any of the, the, the testing itself. Is that correct? Okay. And then also, so with respect to the public access, the areas around that square that you pointed, is it, is it your statement that none of the, the areas around it, maybe with the exception of where, where there's public access by the horse stables, is going to be impacted? Is that right?
Correct. Carmelisa, can we, can we go back to one of the slides that show the graphic, if that's okay?
I'll put it.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be directing the conversation here. So. So, Councilman Wayne Ventura, so we added, actually added this slide in here. So today, most of the pedestrian users, the desire lines, as they would say, they're parking on Olympic Way, roughly where the, the sort of orange triangle terminates into Olympic Way, near the highway there. And they're walking down this trail to what's essentially the main user trail, the main beachhead. This is not an accessible trail today. It's, it's dirt, it's rocks, there's some plants. If, I've hiked down there a couple of times myself. If you have any kind of ambulatory needs, you know, elderly, just, you know, wheelchair, anything like that, you will not be able to go down this trail today. It's pretty, it's pretty limited. The horses can actually access the trail. And so what we're trying to show here is we're working with our property owners to the north. We're actually in close contact with both the Mar Vista and Palomar owners. Like I think they've actually submitted letters of support to you today, showing that we're making sure the trails are accessible to the public. There's a lot of dog walkers that use this spot, as well as the horse stables just to our north. They're accessing, which is a little bit hard to see, but on the very left-hand side, the very western side, that's sort of the main trailhead to Thornton State Beach. It's not very obvious today because it's a closed state beach. The unit is, is not open. So they don't have normal sort of state park access trails. But we tried to move all of the grading, all of our, our work out of that area. So there's no trenching, even if it's short term or long term, we tried to make it there's full public access. And we will hopefully, under our project, which just to give you a sneak preview, we're probably going to formalize this public access as part of our project at a later date. So that, that's our current thinking right now, but we're certainly open to, you know, thought suggestions and comments may have.
Okay. I also wanted to ask, you know, when I, in my very elementary knowledge of soil and digging, the thing that, you know, comes to mind is the sort of avalanche situation where if you disrupt the ground, what kind of an effect could that happen in terms of, you know, an avalanche of some sort and, and spiraling it down? So that's a question I had. And also, the, is there a time period in, in terms of the season of the year when this has to be done? So that is, is rain going to be a factor? And, and when do you anticipate doing the testing and completing it?
I will ask our geologist to address both of those questions.
Okay. Yeah. So in regard to will the drilling and trenching destabilize the cliff? Our answer is no. And, you know, as, as geologists and geotechnical scientists, our job is to go into these areas where there are geologic hazards and assess them through intrusive means. There's been very similar investigations performed nearby the site in the past. So we would not be doing it if we thought that there was any risk to further destabilizing the cliff. So I want to make that very clear. And can, I'm sorry, can you repeat your second question?
It was the wet, the wet season. Is this an appropriate season to be doing this type of soil living?
So it's not, it's not abnormal for us to conduct this kind of work during the rainy season. So we can certainly move forward with that work. With the trenching, we would look for potentially a period of time without a torrential downpour. But we can certainly operate through kind of normal Bay Area weather.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Those are all my questions.
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your presentation. I do have a couple of questions. I'm reading through the public's comments here, the ones that use it and know the area. They've lived here for numerous years. One of the, one of, there's a couple of things. One, in one of them, that frequency area, even though I know that the invasive plant is ice plant, as we all know, which is really like, grows like crazy. I'm not sure which one person, they were saying within an ice plant, they have actually witnessed in that area a, an endangered plant. And I believe it's a CILIA and then CAP, correct me if I'm wrong, LATA. I have the correct, the name in this letter. And they said that it's among the dense patches of the ice plant itself. And it is an endangered species that you cannot very well see it. But once you get in there, that, that, there's a few concerns I have. And so that's one thing. The second thing is, is concerning the Mar Vista stables and, you know, being neighbors or what have you. How does that drilling affect, I know that horses, even when we had just a horse and carriage at Cermoni standing to the side of them, not standing in front of the horse, they're so sensitive to anything. Even though you say that there's minimal sound or what have you. Not only does that trail like really, I mean, is there. And that, that is a very important issue because that horse stables is very valuable to our community and to others that use it. How will that affect the sensitivity to these animals, you know, as far as a disturbance? Thirdly, any type of drilling, even though I know that there, that is just a surface not going down, as you say, a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet. Given the fact that we've had so much climate change being addressed at our state level, local level, county level and everything else, that's a huge concern when somebody says, even though there's no guarantee, how do you really know when something hasn't been done? Even though studies say XYZ, even because you guys are experts in certain areas, how do we really know? There's really no guarantee that once you loosen it or go for that study, that there won't be any ramifications, as Councilwoman Buena Ventura alluded to as well. That's a concern. The coastal zone requires the CDP. And like you said, this is all investigatory, investigatory in nature. But the slope stability, just the geotechnical entailed, using the drill of any kind with any vibrations that were felt under, again, with the animals, the loosening, even though, you know, we may not feel the drilling, or you may not, according is not that loud or the things that I'm reading in your reports. But they are very sensitive to that. And so once it's loosened, you can't repair it, right? Like once, once these studies are done, whatever condition it ends up in after this, it cannot be repaired. Like, like you said, to go back to where it was. So if something did happen during this study, then what, what were precluded of something that, that would not be dangerous to the horse stables or the people surrounding it, or those that recreate in that area, which they, many recreate in that area in our community? And I'm concerned about the Mar Vista stables. Have you spoken with them? Anyone from representative from the Sand Hill Properties? And if so, what is their feedback in this? And are they supportive of this investigatory thing? Because they, you know, they've been here a long time as well. And so I'm concerned. So right now, Madam Mayor, those are the few questions that I have until after the public comments. And I'll take it off the table and whomever it may go to, to answer. I appreciate the answers to the questions. Thank you very much for all of you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, Councilwoman. So you're mentioning right now that you don't need answers from the staff or the proponents for the geotechnical at this time. So I think what we can do, if there's no other comments from my colleagues, we can move on to our public comment and I'll state my questions afterwards. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I have a few after? Thank you. They can answer those after.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We received a high volume of correspondence via email regarding this agenda item. And I do want to assure everyone who wrote to us and emailed us that by five PM today, we provided all of that correspondence to the city council in advance of this meeting. And all of those letters will become part of the public record. In total, there were approximately seventy-seven emails in opposition to this use permit. One email was received in support of the use permit. And an additional petition letter with two hundred and eleven Daly City residents as signers and a mention of many more supporters throughout the area was, was also received from the Thornton Beach Bluff Preserve Organizing Committee. Tonight, through our virtual meeting webpage, I do have about twenty-five comments to read from people on this item. So bear with me, please, and interrupt if you need to. And if you can't hear me and stuff like that. So let me just refresh the page here. Okay, the first comment is from Henry Peterson. It says, "I do not support the Olympic Way Retreat Center project and the CDP being issued for testing of the land which moves this project forward. My reasons are, number one, the land proposed for this project is a sandy, rapidly eroding bluff in an earthquake zone. And any building slash development would pose a danger to the public. Number two, the cost of moving utilities under Skyline Boulevard is prohibitive and would prohibitive and would be a drain on scarce city financial resources. Number three, the intent and nature of this project is not in line with the local coastal plan for Daly City or the California Coastal Act. Number four, the project is incompatible with the current zoning ordinances as C1 light industrial. Number five, this project is opposed by hundreds of Daly City residents. And there is a link provided to a change.org petition called the California Coastal Commission Save Open Space for Outdoor Recreation." It's a long link, but it's on change.org. "This land should remain undeveloped as open space. Thank you for your consideration." The next comment is from Lynn Shibunka. And it says, "I do not support the Olympic Way Retreat Center project and the CDP being issued for testing of the land which moves this project forward." This has the same exact content as the comment I just read with the five different points. So I will, I will leave it there. Okay, the next comment is from, okay, it's from Nicole Chen. It says, "I do not, okay, I do not support the Olympic Way Retreat Center project and the CDP being issued for the testing of the land which moves this project forward." And it lists the same five reasons as the last two comments. The next comment is from Sarah Harrison. It says, "I am writing to you today to urge you to vote against allowing developers to build a large for-profit building on Thornton Beach Bluff. I am a local neighboring resident who visits the bluff weekly. Thornton Beach Bluff has connected me to other people who have formed my community. In my business, I serve residents of Daly City and San Francisco by walking dogs at Thornton Beach Bluff. I contract two additional people, and this is a main source of our livelihood. We depend on using this space. It is not only the three of us, but upwards of one hundred others like me whose livelihoods depend on the space as well, including Mar Vista Stables, which has been in business for one hundred plus years. In addition, preserving natural spaces is one way we can impact the global climate crisis on a local level. Ten years of construction will deeply impact and permanently damage the wildlife ecosystem. The last two coyote families in the Bay Area who keep the route and vermin population under control use this space for hunting and traveling. Ongoing construction will drive animals like nesting native birds and owls away with noise and disruption. So much has been taken away from the Bay Area wildlife. Let them keep this small habitat. If this building is approved, it is not just animals, but also the people of Daly City who will be negatively impacted. Making this area private will rob Daly City citizens of space that generations have, have enjoyed. This is everyone's local park, not just a tourist destination. Fishermen, paragliders and horseback riders come here. Moreover, families and people with pets come here to enjoy the open space. The neighborhood deserves Thornton Beach Bluff to be public. I am friends with people who live here and come every day, and this is a huge part of their lives." I am friends with people who live here and come every day, and this is a huge part of their lives and why they've chosen to live in this area. A retreat center will only be for private use, a large building on unstable land. February of twenty nineteen, a woman named Kyra Scarlett was buried alive in a landslide less than a mile from the bluffs. It is a dangerous place to build. This retreat center will serve only a small percentage of people, but will impact much more in comparison. Is taking people's livelihoods, hurting the climate and ecosystem and robbing the neighborhood of a community space worth it, is a very high price to pay. Let's preserve Thornton Beach Bluff. It is in these small steps we can make a difference in helping reduce our carbon footprint. Thank you for your consideration. The next comment is from Kelly Zerga. It says, Dear Daly City Council, regarding item, agenda item number ten, I do not support the Olympic Way Retreat Center project and the C D P being issued for testing of the land which moves the project forward. My reasons are, number one, the land proposed for this project lies between Thornton Vista and Fort Funston and includes the main trail down to the beach and the public accesses. This is an area that has been long used by locals and Bay Area residents for dog walking, horseback riding, hiking, fishing, surfing, kiteboarding and paragliding. It has beautiful vast views and should remain as is, unspoiled and undeveloped for generations to enjoy. Number two, the land is situated in an earthquake zone next to the San Andreas Fault with, and with knowledge of a recent death due to, due to the eroding sandy bluff, this would not be an ideal location to build a huge facility. Number three, this land homes fragmented habitats that exist in urban areas that provide a last refuge for many locally threatened plant and animal species otherwise absent from the surrounding urban matrix. These areas also improve connectivity between larger, more contiguous habitats and nearby parks and open space reserves. Preservation of these small patcheses, of these small patches is critical to the conservation of biodiversity and urban landscapes. Number four, the intent and nature of this project is not in line with the local coastal plan for Daly City or the California Coastal Act. Number five, is it really a religious retreat center? Do we need a retreat center at this location? Can't they find somewhere else to build? Number six, this project has been opposed by thousands of local residents, and it references the same change.org petition. This land should remain undeveloped. Thank you for your time and consideration. The next comment is from Holly Prohaska. It says, Daly City Council, I wish to formally register my opposition to the proposed project use permit and coastal development permit for geotechnical subsurface investigation by Sand Hill Properties and NGO. I echo the concerns with other local residents that the project takes away public access, impedes open space, is a violation of the current Daly City plan and will not bring money into Daly City, being a nonprofit venture that will not bring in any taxable income to the city. Regarding the SEQA KTEX form that was used to allow the geotechnical testing, an initial study should have been used to address the socioeconomic hardship that testing would bring to the adjacent stable, preventing safe trail rides and essentially shutting that stable down for two weeks. The S P C A should also have been coordinated with as one of the drill holes is adjacent to a corral of thirty horses. I suggest that the city ask NGO to pay for an S P C A or Humane Society representative to monitor the horse's well-being during the drilling and stop drilling if they show signs of stress and agitation. If no such monitor is required and the horses in the corral spook and run into the fences and injure or kill themselves, would Sand Hill Properties, NGO, Daly City or all three be liable for the injury slash death of livestock under C A State livestock regulations during the geotechnical investigation? Thank you for the opportunity to comment. The next comment is from Lisa Dunmire. It says, I urge the council members to not issue the permit or grant support for this project. What gain to Daly City residents is there when there will be, when they will be losing access, not gaining access to additional open space? The next comment is from Lillian Montgomery. It says, I am opposed to the proposed complex being built at the intersection of John Daly Boulevard and Skyline. I have been a resident of Daly City for sixty years. I often walk my dogs and enjoy the ocean nearby. Please vote no. There are numerous other places to build your proposed building. The next comment is from. Patricia Diaz. It says, good evening, council members. My name is Patricia Diaz and I am a, oh, sorry, that's, that's for, that's for later. The next comment is from David Frankel. It says, I do not support the Olympic Way Retreat Center project and the C D P being issued for testing on, of land which moves the project forward. This lists the same five reasons as some of the other form letters we received. This land should remain undeveloped as open space. The next comment is from Bryant Gallo. As a native in San Francisco and having been raised in Daly City, I strongly oppose the construction of buildings and any sort of damage done to our seashore. Everyone is opposed to this permit because we know it will cause great damage and ruin this beautiful area in the future. It will immediately destroy wildlife, long-term introduce pollution and waste and overall ruin environment next to the ocean. I am strongly opposed to this permit and believe we need to stop this great harm from being done to our homes for all present and future citizens of Daly City. The next comment is from Tatum King. Good evening, distinguished city council mayor, vice mayor and members. I have two concerns for you tonight. First, I think that we as community members should have the opportunity to provide oral comments direct to the city council versus being added to a queue to be read aloud. The distinguished city council already provided such an opportunity for a hearing earlier this year, so techno, technology is available for this request to improve engagement with constituents during the pandemic. Second, I am concerned about the Daly City Planning Commission's approval of the Sand Hill Project at Thornton Beach. I provided objection to this user permit, permit and development to the planning commission ahead of their last meeting, as I would assert that it is subject to SEQA. It will potentially damage sensitive habitat. The proposed project is not consistent with current zoning. Essentially, they are building a hotel and it will limit public access to the bluff slash public beach area. As such, I request that a special session of the city council be held on this user permit to provide Daly City community members the opportunity to provide input prior to any decisions being made by responsible elected officials. Thank you for your consideration of these requests. The next comment is from Martha E. Pankey. Dear members of the city council, I am and have been a resident of Daly City for many years. I am writing this email to ask you to not approve the development of the Olympic Way Retreat Center at Thornton Beach Bluff Preserve. As a youngster, I would access this area to ride horses at the Mar Vista Stable and swim at Thornton State Beach before the beach was closed by a landslide in nineteen eighty-two. I currently access the Thornton Beach Vista to enjoy the view, the local flora and occasional fauna. This area should be maintained as a recreation area open to the public where hiking, riding horses and other activities can continue. The natural terrain should remain into perpetuity as it provides ocean vistas and open space for the residents of Daly City and the public at large. One other point, and probably the most important one to consider, is that Thornton Beach Bluff Preserve is prone to landslides caused by erosion and seismic activity, thus making it very unwise to develop the land in this area. Please put a stop to development of the retreat at the preserve. Your children and grandchildren will thank you for it. The next comment is from Karen Schwartz. It says, as, as twenty-six-year residents of Westlake, our family opposes any development of the land next to the staples on Olympic Way. The land should remain for recreational use and stay unspoiled. It is a beautiful part of our community and should not be ruined by a development. The development will bring extra traffic noise and will be an eyesore to a quiet, beautiful neighborhood in wonderful Daly City. The land is naturally eroding and building on the cliff doesn't seem a wise idea. Please keep things the way they are. Don't take our few spots of nature and beauty away from us. Thank you for your time. The next comment is from Ethel Gallo. No, totally opposed to any construction in our beautiful Daly City coastal area. Respect the environment, respect the people, respect the future generations. Do not allow this permit to ruin our California seaside coast. The next comment is from Gabriel Gallo. As a lifelong resident of Daly City, I am strongly opposed to any building construction in this area. The environment will be strongly negatively impacted, and this construction idea will cause many problems in the future, including the destruction and pollution of the coastline. I strongly oppose and see no value in the construction. Please leave the area as it is. Everyone in the Daly City area opposes the construction proposal. Next comment is from Marie Seitzer. I do not support the Olympic Way Retreat Center project and the C D P being issued for testing of the land which moves this project forward, and nor should you. This area is not suitable for a building, is rapid, it is a rapidly eroding bluff and any construction would be destroyed and fall into the ocean in a short amount of time. Secondly, the cost and effort of moving utilities to this part of the city would pose a danger to anyone. Thirdly, the intent and nature of this project is not in line with the local coastal plan for Daly City or the California Coastal Act, and Sand Hill Properties knows it. They're just being shady. Fourthly, the project is incompatible with the current zoning ordinances as C one light industrial. Again, Sand Hill Properties knows it. They would petition to change the zoning for this project. Lastly, and most importantly, this project is opposed by hundreds of Daly City residents and thousands of Bay Area residents, despite what Sand Hill Property says. Every single person I have spoke to is against this project. Don't turn a blind eye to your constituents. We elected you. It is now your turn to represent us. The next comment is from Cheryl Richard. I hope the Sand Hill plans for a wedding slash convention center on the Thornton Beach Bluff doesn't get past the soils engineers. Park visitors prefer the open space free of traffic. It's peaceful and beautiful. Also, a convention center would bring too much traffic to the slopes, speeding up erosion, not to mention the weight of the building and the underground infrastructure, like water pipes that can leak, causing sinkholes. The bluffs already seem to be eroding faster because of the dramatic increase in visitors, some of whom deepen and widen gullies by turning them into paths down to the beach, down the side of the cliffs. I grew up in the area and I've seen the landslides that occur with big earthquakes. There are two old highways buried on lower terraces. There's a large fenced-off gully in front of the circular parking lot that used to be a trail back in nineteen ninety-five before the big earthquake. You can get an idea of how bad, how much landslides. I've also seen a number of houses, cliffhangers, that eventually go down the cliffs to the left of that same parking lot. My dad used to drive along Westlake streets to see the latest victims of erosion where the entire backyard is gone and the house is perched on the cliff's edge. So many hu, houses were lost. If some geologist gets a big bribe to approve the project, Sand Hill will make a profit selling the building or running the business. When the next big earthquake takes the building and the highway, Sand Hill will walk away with their profits and earthquake insurance proceeds. But our beautiful bluff and the protection for our highway and houses across the street will be gone forever. Sand Hill probably never walked on the land. They probably have no idea how fragile those sand bluffs are. As to the community service of a beautiful wedding space, people can rent the beautiful new environmental sciences building at Skyline College. It has stunning views, ample parking, and it's a perfect event space surrounded by nature. The next comment is from Elizabeth Edmonds. Thank you for reading this letter and I appreciate your time, you taking time to listen to the community. The matter in which I am writing to you about is dear to me, and I appreciate being able to communicate my thoughts about the proposal to build a Christian recreation center at Thornton Beach Bluff. I want to express my strong opposition to the proposed geotechnical testing for the Olympic Way Retreat Center. The community is opposed to this project, and there are many reasons why this project should not move forward, including, one, the land is Franciscan sandstone and unsound and not safe to build on. Number two, denying hundreds of people access to the space, especially during a pandemic and in the future, is hurtful to the community. Number three, a Christian retreat center is not inclusive to all of the community. Number four, it will be very disruptive to wildlife, causing noise pollution and destruction of natural habitats. Number five, it will subject the horses at the stable to stress and noise pollution from very loud construction. Horses are flight animals and very easily scared by loud noises. If you have not visited the area, I invite you to do so and go and see it for yourself. This land is gorgeous and majestic. It is enjoyed by the community and a home for so much wildlife, including owls and many species of birds. It's a refuge and should remain as is for the community to enjoy undeveloped. The land is Franciscan sandstone and is visibly unstable and not suitable for building on. Prior projects have literally collapsed and crumbled, and existing structures are on the verge of tumbling down the hill. Building a religious Christian retreat center is not inclusive of all the community. Our communities have been experiencing so much division, and we are in the middle of a raging pandemic. Living and acting in court, in accordance with Christian values means being inclusive of all community. Sand Hill property should not be allowed to test or build on this beautiful and sacred site. The community that uses this space is overwhelmingly opposed to this project, and I believe I can speak on behalf of the wildlife and say that they want their home to be left as is, undisturbed. Please listen to our voices and do not allow this project to move forward. The next comment is from Philip Seitzer. This comment is intended to discuss the coastal development permit. I believe it is in the public's best interest not to grant this permit, nor any subsequent construction permits associated with developing the Thornton Bleach Beach Bluffs area. This space is currently used extensively by the public for outdoor recreation. And as this council may be aware, the public has expressed nearly universal disapproval of this project. Mr. Stephen Lynch's assertion that the public was somehow okay with this project, as stated in the November seventeenth city council meeting, is demonstrably false. Furthermore, I believe construction violates a number of local and state laws. For instance, the bluff area is currently zoned as light industrial. Construction of a two-story fifty thousand square foot structure is hardly light and I, and would require a change to the local coastal plan zoning laws. These laws, as they are, for good reason. I imagine that changing them over the objections of the public would set a dangerous precedent. I contend also that the motion to grant the testing permit was, in fact, already a violation, in violation of SEQA. Owing to the proximity of the drill sites to the old barn. Construction on this site is very dangerous because of extensive coastal erosion. I am also concerned about the taxpayer burden associated with the construction of you, new you to, new utility lines, which would necess, would, which would necessary to support the proposed structure. A burden, it must be mentioned again, the taxpayers overwhelmingly object to shouldering. The next comment is from. Christopher Gavidia. Dear Honorable Daly City Council, I do not support the Olympic Way Retreat Center project and the C D P being issued for testing of the land which moves this project forward. I have been a resident of San Mateo County my entire life, spanning thirty-seven years. I currently live in the South San Francisco Westboro area and graduated from South San Francisco High School in two thousand and one, and graduated from San Francisco State University in two thousand and six with a B. A. in psychology. Like many other individuals, in twenty twenty, I have struggled with depression and anxiety during the COVID nineteen public health crisis. Thornton Beach Bluff has helped my mental health by being an outdoor safe haven to visit and experience Mother Nature to clear my mind. This bluff should remain open and accessible for all residents and visitors of San Mateo County. It should not be tarnished by construction and private development. Losing this beautiful open patch of nature would be a great loss for San Mateo County and all of its residents. The next comment is from Hannah Blair. It says, my name is Hannah Blair. I live in Westlake and I'm asking you to vote no on item ten. Daly City needs public open space, not a fifty thousand square foot event center built on unstable sand cliffs by an out-of-town developer. I walk to the beach almost every day and I see joggers, dog walkers and families out for much-needed fresh air. Everyone I've spoken to has been surprised and upset that this development is even being considered. Please do not allow it to go forward. Please vote no on item ten. Next comment is from Lynette Cook. Dear Honorable Daly City Council, I oppose the Olympic Way Retreat Center project and C D P regarding testing of the land to move this project forward. My reasons are, number one, the need for open space highlighted more urgently than ever before by COVID nineteen for exercise, mental health and physical safety and well-being. This property already is viewed as a physical, mental and spiritual retreat by Daly City residents and Bay Area visitors. Number two, alignment with Daly City's twenty thirty general plan, which states the need to ensure open space, recreational opportunities and the preservation of natural resources, and recognizes current system-wide deficiencies for these. Number three, the land is unstable and unsafe. The coastal bluff from San Francisco to Pacifica regularly erodes, resulting in the loss of homes and apartment buildings. In twenty nineteen, the cliff at Fort Funston, just north of Fort Thornton Beach, caved in on two women and a dog. One woman died. Number four, welfare of animals, the noise vibration and other disruption that digging and drilling during the period of geo, geotechnical testing will cause to the horses at Mar Vista Stables and to the habitat of endangered species located on this property, such as the San Francisco garter snake and the California red-legged frog, is unacceptable. As a twenty-two-year-old, uh, I'm sorry, as a twenty-two-year resident of Daly City, I welcome such a retreat center only if it is approved for a suitable location where the loss of open space and threat to animals and endangered species are uncompromised. I appreciate this opportunity to share my views with the Daly City Council. The next comment is from Nicole Zuninga. I do not support the Olympic Way Retreat Center project and the C D P being issued for the testing of the land which moves this project forward. This, um, this letter also mentions the same five reasons as some of the other form letters. Um, and at the end, it says, this land should remain undeveloped as open space. Bluff should remain as open space for recreational use to maintain views. Choose nature over development for the California coast. I'm a newer resident of Daly City and fell in love with this beautifully preserved piece of nature. Preserve this land for the public, please. Thank you for your consideration. The next comment is from Francesca. The next comment is from Francesca Lomotan. My name is Francesca Lomotan and I am with the, oh, sorry, this is for later. Okay, we have two more. This one is from Daniel Frankel. Do not support the Olympic Way Retreat Center project and the CDP being issued for testing of the land which moves this project forward. My reasons are number one. These are the same five reasons as, as we've listed before. This land should remain undeveloped as open space. And number five, I'm sorry, and the last comment is from John Wood. And it says, as a concerned citizen and an organizer of Thornton Beach Bluff Preserve, I oppose the proposed Olympic Way Retreat Center project and issuance of the coastal development permit. The city council should listen to public input about this project. There is a strong and growing opposition to it. Over two hundred and fifty Daly City residents to date. This land is not suitable for development. Building on sandy eroding cliffs in an earthquake zone is dangerous and puts public safety at risk. The current zoning regulations do not support this type of development. But any development of this area is simply inadvisable, given the evidence from decades of prior mistakes in this vein and the cost of those. Why would Daly City even consider this type of project? It is being sponsored by a nonprofit foundation, meaning the city gets no property taxes, et cetera. The city would be on the hook for moving utilities under Skyline Boulevard to support electrical, internet, wastewater, sewer, et cetera. Does the community need a religious retreat center? No. This project is not in any way compatible with the local coastal plan for Daly City. We plan to appeal any CDP to the Coastal Commission. Yes, some will say this is just a CDP for testing, but it is a slippery slope. Once the council votes for that, the project technically moves to the next stage. Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be more advisable to redirect Daly City resources, now even scarcer due to COVID, to other priorities? This land should remain as open space. Thank you for your consideration. And that, that was the last comment.
Thank you so much, Stephen, for, um, reciting all those comments from the public. I want to say thank you to the public that has turned in their comments, um, this evening via written or through the site. Um, and, um, appreciate, uh, your input. So at this time, I think, um, we will, there are some concerns and questions. I think I, I, I would love to ask, uh, staff and also, well, um, Sand Hill Property in regards to, um, the geotechnical aspect of, um, the, the study. So it has there been coordination with, number one, has there been coordination with, uh, Mar Vista Stables? Number two, um, does it impede the routes that they, they have right now? As far as the geotechnical study? And then, uh, three, also, how loud and noisy is the impact of the borings during the daytime? As far as like decibels and how loud it is. Although I know there is a highway, but there's still like residential, uh, folks across the highway. And then, um, is there no sales tax that would go to the city of Daly City in regards to what was mentioned earlier? If the retreat center, and this is not about the geotechnical, but Sand Hill is here. In regards to, or staff can answer in regards to the comment that, uh, some of, uh, the constituents and residents have raised. So those are the, the questions I have for staff or Sand Hill. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Would you, would you mind adding my questions to that as well?
The questions that you also mentioned, um, to be answered at this point, I think we wanted to hear from the public comments. And then if there are any other questions, maybe we'll, we'll go with that. And then if there's any additional questions from council, um. So we would follow so that it's not too lengthy and they can kind of go through the questions we have.
So this is Stephen. So thank you, staff. Um, a lot to unpack there. Uh, why don't we go ahead and start with some of the, the technical questions first, because I think those are the easiest to be resolved. Um, as well as this is the, the, the environmental permit that's in front of you. Remember, we're being asked to study this as part of the, the CEQA process, right? So we were asked to do this by the city and by the Coastal Commission. Again, as part of our environmental disclosure process that's in front of you. So I want to make, make that clear, just kind of where, where we are in the process. We have a long way to go. We, we certainly haven't had a chance to, to, you know, uncover every stone at, at this point. We're still discovering as, as we go along as well. So with that, I, I'd like to ask, uh, WRA to talk about some of the biological questions, some of the noise questions. And then I have, have Nadine kind of talked to some of the drilling noise and other, other, other pieces. Um, and any other comments you kind of heard from the public, go ahead and, and, and address the best you can as well. It'd be great.
Yeah, sure. Um, so let's start with sensitive habitats. I heard a lot of comments about their, I'm concerned about the sensitive habitat being impacted. And you just want to emphasize, you know, this is not a sensitive habitat. It's been highly disturbed dating back to the forties. There were all sorts of structures back there in the fifties. It's been disturbed over time. It's invasive species out there. The community is called ice plants, as I mentioned. So there's no concern from a sensitive species or community's perspective. Um, we did do a rare plant survey. determined that there was a moderate potential for a plant called San Francisco spine flower to occur. It is not present. Uh, we did this rare plant survey during its bloom period. And there are no, uh, CNDDB records of this plant. Or any of the plants for that matter. That's the California Natural Diversity Database. It records all rare plants in the region as well as the California Native Plant Society. There's no records on the site. We didn't see anything when we went out during our preliminary site visit. And we didn't see anything during our focused rare plant survey. So we are very confident that there are no rare plants on the site. Um, in terms of wildlife, there are no special status wildlife species that would need to be addressed for CEQA as well. The project would be occurring outside of the nesting bird season. That typically from February first till about October. Um, so we're outside of that. And, um, you know, in terms of noise, uh, you know, this is a very short-term project. It's only two weeks. And the project site is directly next to the highway. So the horses should be acclimated to some level of sound disturbance anyway, at this point. Cars are frequently driving by. There's RVs going in and out. So, you know, based on the minimal amount of time that's going to be spent causing these impacts as well as just the site is so disturbed anyway, I don't see that as being a major concern.
Great. And I'll just, I go over a couple of the geotechnical concerns that I was hearing. So by and large, I, I'm hearing a lot that the, uh, the land is unstable. There's a lot of concern about, um, namely the woman who was, uh, killed last year, um, and the landslides. And, um, I do understand this concern, but I, I also want to point out that the site is different. Um, the landslides that there, that I, I think the public is bringing up are those caused by wave action. And the purpose of this geotechnical assessment is really to see what the long-term effects of a deep-seated landslide are going to be. Not these sort of superficial landslides that we see actively every day. A lot of the, the neighborhoods that have been destroyed in Daly City are right up against a cliff that is being eroded by the waves. So if you look at the profile of this site, you'll see that there is actually historic, um, or a, um, an ancient landslide that is buttressing the site. So that landslide is sort of a bench that is being actively eroded by the wave action. And then this site is sort of protected by that bench. So if you can imagine that the situation is a little different, the processes that we're looking to explore are just different than the kind of landsliding that I think everybody is familiar with. Um, and in regard to noise, I just also want to, um, just touch that we have done this kind of, uh, drilling many times. Next to livestock. It's true that they are interested, but they're, they haven't been spooked. We've done this many times for, you know, farm structures and, and things like that. So, uh, drilling right next to livestock is not new to us. Like I said, the, the, the noise that the drill rigs put off is, um, sort of like farm equipment, um, honestly. So, um, so I think that's, I, I think that addresses the major concerns. If there's anything that I missed, I'm happy to touch on that.
And I think the, the only other, other pieces that I would add in there, additionally, any questions you have in, in terms of sales tax. Our project, you know, is not in front of you right now, but just to give you the, you know, sneak preview. Yeah, we are proposing an interdenominational Christian retreat center. It's something that would be used by multiple churches up and down the peninsula in San Francisco, in Daly City. There's a lot of Christian retreat centers around the Bay Area. Um, this isn't new. Um, we have everything from, you know, presentation center and, you know, Costa Noah is, you know, sort of the, uh, uh, retreat center as well at this point. That's kind of what we modeled after a, a little bit. And that's kind of the, the Monday to Thursday, sort of occupancy of the building. And then the idea is sort of Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it would be o- open to the public in terms of, you know, someone having a major birthday party, you know, a product launch, a wedding has been referenced. Obviously, that's a very, the great site for having, you know, a wedding or just a large, you know, event, you know, or, you know, any kind of a civic event. So that's the idea is that the site does make some profit. Obviously, it's, it's not a for-profit venture for us. Um, and then during the week it does serve. There's a lot of ministries that are running out of space. A lot of churches are finding themselves without any major meeting rooms, um, anywhere to go. That's the idea is it would serve that. There's not a major church or organization backing this right now. And this is just Sand Hill Profit, Sand Hill Property Company. We have a nonprofit portion of our company just called Sand Hill Foundation, and that's what this project is for. It, 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 some of the comments, I, I, I must say, make it sound like a deep, dark and mysterious thing. It's not. It's a Christian retreat center. Nothing more and nothing less. We do have some hotel rooms. Right now, I think we have about twenty-eight hotel rooms. The idea is if you have a wedding there, then the wedding party can stay on site. If this becomes a significant issue for the city, then we, we would simply remove those. It's not meant to be a hotel. There are no twenty-eight room hotels. They just don't, they don't really exist. Um, and this certainly is not one of them. That's the idea is we just have some supportive rooms. But to, to the tax question. I'm not an expert obviously in, in fiscal, um, matters, but similar to the stables just to the north. My understanding is that services are not taxed. So when you rent a horse, I, I don't believe there's tax on that. If you rent a space, I, I'm not sure if there is tax on that, uh, to be honest with you. Uh, this building is a thirty thousand square foot building. It's about, about eleven percent floor-to-air ratio for the site. It's not meant to be a fiscal boost to the Daly City economy, but it will not be a drain in any way. There will be some, obviously money coming into the city as a result of this. Uh, but this isn't a Costco. This, this is not a Home Depot, guys. That's not what this is meant to be. This is meant to be a project that's open to the public. It serves Daly City, serves Daly City churches. Again, interdenominational, we're not tied to a specific church. It's meant to be a resource for the public. We're moving to improve the site. Right now, the site is not accessible. Unless you are in great physical condition or have a horse, it's not accessible to others. It's dangerous. There's not a fence on the edge. There's not good lighting at night. And we're proposing to help make this a better condition. We're proposing to have a trail that's in permanent accessibility for the public. Right now, there is no public easement on this land. It is, technically, it's trespassing. There's no enforcement of this, but we're trying to formalize this going forward. So, sorry to be on my soapbox. I don't mean to do that, but I'm trying to kind of answer a lot of that. I, I wrote down. Actually, there were more than twenty-five comments. I wrote them all down. So I'm trying to answer those as best I can to help you know kind of where, where we're going with this. Again, it's not meant to be a destruction of this hill, uh, the cliff top. We're actually proposing restore the habitat. And we're trying to make the trails better. We're trying to make it flatter. We're trying to make it actually accessible to everyone. And by the way, just one other comment, I have hiked the site several times. In fact, you've been out to the site dozens of times, so I know it pretty well. Yeah. So I don't know if that answers a good body of the question there, Madam Mayor.
No, I, that answered a lot of the questions, thinking Mr. Lynch around, um, you know, jotting down the questions that were stated by our community. And, um, yeah, and, and understanding that, uh, yours, this is geotechnical study, but you're stating that the, down the line, um, you're looking at, um, more accessibility to community members around access to that area. And so I guess, um, the other question was, yeah, have you been in communication with the Mar Vista Stables? I think that was the other one.
Uh, yes, we've been communicating with both the property owners to the north. So the stable business owner is actually a tenant of those property owners. So we have not been in direct contact with him. That's it. That's an owner-tenant issue. Uh, we certainly can at any time. We understand the horses need access to the beach as part of their operations and that's exactly what, what we've opened that up. Originally, we had some of our, our trenches and drill boring holes located more to the north. Responding to some of the needs, move everything as far away from the stables as we absolutely can to make sure there's the minimal effect on, on horses as best as we can. So.
Thank you. And were there any other questions that were answered? I think, um, the questions around, uh, the species, plant species were answered. Earlier that was brought up and then also around the erosion, um, that Nadine, um, mentioned that comes from the, the waves, um, and not necessarily the same, the same issue there. But I, but I do have a question in regards to the study of, um, I mean, you're doing the borings, et cetera. How, how is there, is there another area similar to Thornton Beach that, um, you've been able to study as far as? I don't, I think it's Nadine or Gregory, that, that is comparable so that, um, there could be a comparison for us.
So we've certainly studied many major landslides before by using similar tactics. Um, this is a, you know, this is a very beautiful, unique, um, property. I'm not sure that we can give you a direct comparison. Um, the mechanism here is, uh, you know, we're having a, an ancient landslide and then a bluff. So, um, th- those two don't coincide all the time. But we have many, many times, um, performed, uh, deep drilling on, uh, on potential deep-seated landslides in the Bay Area. And, uh, yeah, we could, we could point to many of those studies.
Thank you. That would be helpful. Any other questions from my colleagues?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a, I have some, I have a few questions. Okay, um, I like to know the story and history of a lot of things. I think that's just my nature. So, um, if you could just answer, answer the, these few questions like, what are the, if we talk about these ancient lands, landslides, um, but I really want to understand the history of landslides at Thornton Beach. Like what is the history of landslides in that area? Has there been previous studies of that area? And the third is, um, what has prevented development before? Like it's been years, right? I go out there once in a while just to, um, kind of like meditate and I, you know, I read, um, you know, I'm a history person. So I like reading like the billboards on there and they were saying that there used to be like railroads and stuff that ran parallel to that area. And then also just understanding like, um, how far is the San Andreas Fault to that area? Cause I know we are in earthquake country, so, um, and we can never ever be, we can't predict earthquakes. I just want to understand like. and we can never, ever be, we can't predict earthquakes. I just want to understand, like, the story, the, the narrative, the history of this area.
Well, um, actually, if, I, I'm not sure if you had a chance to review our feasibility assessment for this project. Because we actually did include a, a section called History of Landsliding in the, in the site vicinity. So we appreciate that there is a long, rich history of, of landsliding in the area, and, and that is all provided. So this particular, uh, so the, the Thornton Beach landslide is an ancient landslide, and forgive me, I'm forgetting the, the, the timing that is projected for that, uh, that landslide. I want to say in the order of five hundred years. So the, the slip surface that we're, you know, we're concerned with would be the next generation of sliding, which has already occurred north where there is no buttressing landslide left. So Thornton Beach, so this bluff area where the proposed development is, is protected by the presence of that former landslide. So there's, yeah, there's a, there is a, a rich history of, um, of the, the railroad and, and the former developments out at the, at the property. So I'm not sure exactly what you're, what you're interested in, but I would, I would en- encourage you to review the feasibility assessment. We've provided a really long history of the area there.
I mean, it's for the public, so it could be explicitly said to them, so they, they can understand. I mean, I have, I have access to report. I know the public has access to report, but it's just good to have the public understand where y'all are coming from. And so why hasn't this area been developed before?
To, uh, Counselor, I, I could speak to that. So it, it actually has been developed before. So there used to be a, a restaurant and a dance club out on this site called the Silver Saddle. I believe there was some railroad history, but that was a long time ago, as well as there was actually a nursery on the site for quite some time. But those buildings had been torn down and they were not redeveloped by the Norton family amongst other owners us after that time. So.
Right. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor, I may, just to speak on previous development applications that the city has received. We have received quite a few pre-applications, but never to the, they have never proceeded to the formal application stage. So, I mean, there could be a number of factors, factors, if you'd be financial, basically, the feasibility of the site. I mean, Mr. Lynch has attested to how significantly expensive it is to conduct the geotechnical studies. So a lot of those factors could have been considered. But Mr. Lynch and Sand, Sand Hill Property are, are the first to move on to the formal application process.
Thank you, Mr. Morales, and thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't want to ask you all of your questions and, or. Are there any other comments or questions from my colleagues?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I have a couple more questions. I know that, Ms. Morales, could you, could you explain to me? I know two sites are not the same. But when the Korean church in our, in our Daily City was originally built, I don't believe, where, where was it adjacent to? Or if you and Michael could remember, it was not on a cliff, correct? Because we know currently it's not, it's kind of like the, the parking lot is collapsing. But when it was originally approved, it was considered, obviously, it got approved and it got built. And so I don't think it was a cliff site, was it? Do you guys have that as a reference? Or no, two sites are the same, but in the same vicinity? Like, it started out as a, it got approved, and then it ended up now that the parking lot has shifted so much and not in good shape, as we all know.
Well, if I may, to be clear, the, the Korean church, the Korean church that's on Avalon Drive now is not the original Korean church. The original Korean church
Right.
actually gave up some of their soil during some El Nino events in the nineties. And so this is their second church. When that project was being reviewed, and I'd have to go deeper into files on that, I had just started working here. It wasn't actually my project, but I do recall the conversations around it. It was known that a portion of the la- uh, parking lot was going to erode away. But what seemed to be on solid ground, and which actually is on solid ground now, is the actual tree building itself.
Right.
But there, there actually originally had been proposed a much larger parking area, and through the Coastal Commission Appeal, the parking lot was reduced in size, and there was some anticipated erosion expected.
Yeah. So I guess my point is that when something is disturbed or what have you, even, even if it's a, you know, the vibration of the, of the studies, that there, there can be a shift. And then we didn't predict anything like that happening to that church site. As we know, like, I, I get that it was a second church or whatever, but at the same time, like, um, the current site that we're looking at, between the vibration still bothers me and what it does to the horses, although livestock, but in particular horses, like, oh, what, what the sensitivity to them is and fault lines, as some of my colleagues have alluded, alluded to. Because we are in our earthquake country, so we don't really have any guarantees. So, and, and not to reiterate it, but because many of my questions were, were not answered directly due to, I guess, the time limits or what have you, is that, um, once something is disturbed, again, it cannot be replaced. It's already changed, you've already changed, uh, the, a, a part of it. Once the studies are done, once the drilling is done, however deep it's done, once the ice plates, vegetation is removed, none of that. So you've already disturbed it. So I think that's a concern for me. Definitely not the aspects of what the, um, the intent of the building is. Mr. Lynch, I think that that, you may, uh, which is a very nice point, definitely not due to that, the, the need for the, like you said, the churches in the area, that there is a spot where they don't, you're right, they didn't have any places to be. So it has nothing to do with that. For me, it's all the, more the environmental and the technology and disturbing the area and not being, I'll put it back, aspects and the vibration of the horses, which even if it's not a noise, it's a vibration. And, uh, in the SEQA, we know that SEQA in itself, anyone that has studied SEQA, which I know that many of you are experts at, have we dealt with environmental issues in my past, that SEQA does not cover everything. So when somebody, when it's exempt, I know it's just a broad, it's a very detailed document, but sometimes things that are not covered in it because there's been several changes and updates to SEQA. It does, uh, for me, a lot of things were extracted from it to where it is today. So those are, those are my big concerns as well in that particular use. But thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that's all I have for right now. So I appreciate the time, and thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and questions. I think, um, if there are no other comments or questions at this time, we will proceed with, um, if there's any motion to recommend this action. But prior to that, are there any last questions for the applicant and then also for the scientists and experts that are on the line?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a few comments if I may. Okay. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, I like to remind my colleagues that what is on the agenda is the use permit for geotechnical subsurface, subsurface investigation at this particular location. So it is basically whether to move forward to allow geotesting. What, uh, I'm looking at is, what is the purpose of this investigation? The purpose of this investigation is to find out the results and later move forward to determine if something can be built on this particular area and whether it will accommodate it. Now, the cost for this, as alluded to, from what we've heard thus far, is going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. Well, if you think about it, if you're going to spend that amount of money, then I can see, foreseeably see that in the future, it's going to come back to council and say, look, we've already spent two hundred thousand dollars, and we would hope that the city council sees and kind of give us a, a basically, a, a pass to move forward. I am very, very against that because I don't want to owe anybody anything. What I think should have been done here is, first of all, number one, we should have had community outreach of the plan of what is proposed to come. That's number, number one. I heard that we've had other structures there before in the past, in the history. True, okay, if we did, and I don't know about this, but to build a retreat is a different kind of structure. It's of greater magnitude, greater magnitude, and that is entirely different. Number three, I appreciate the experts on this call, Ms. Perryatt and Mr. Lynch. I appreciate your expertise, but you know, as they say, when you fly on an airplane and if your flight is canceled, it's beyond circumstances, beyond our control. So in this particular case, even though you can be an expert, there are forces that are beyond your control, such as Mother Nature. We're talking about the San Andreas Fault. I've heard the term of cliffhangers. We have no control as to whether these forces are going to come into place, even erosion, twenty years from now, thirty years from now, forty years from now. I won't be here. But who is going to have the ultimate responsibility in addressing these forces of nature? If we had a crystal ball, we can make this decision tonight, but we don't. So what we need is community outreach. Dr. Rod, the Vice Mayor, brought up some information, and all these questions needs to be answered before we make any sort of decision as to what potentially may happen on this particular property. And approving a geological subsurface, subsurface investigation only leads to the fact that we are going to build something. And I'm, I don't think I'm ready for it. I don't think the community is ready for it. Of course, there are some good points that it can make it better than what is out there now, such as additional trails and et cetera. But all that information is given to us tonight. Oh, well, we're going to build trails. Well, we're going to do this. No, not going to do it. We need to work at this very slowly before we make a decision. So that's my comment, Madam Mayor, and to the rest of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester, for your comments. I see Councilmember Benaventura, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I see it a little differently, and let me tell you why. I mean, I, I think Councilmember Sylvester raised some really good points, as well as Vice Mayor Dasmanbawal. And, um, but I, I, I actually look at it in reverse order. Because when, when you talk about community output and, and outreach, and you're, and you want to talk to them about a project, of course, that's really good and necessary to do. But you can't really approach them with a project unless you have the evidence and the investigation done about the sustainability of that project and whether or not it'll work. So if you're going to go out to the community, I would think at the very least, you should want to have that testing done in advance of that meeting, so you can present them with a credible project for them to decide upon. And so, and, and again, when, when Councilmember Sylvester was, started off his comments, which is absolutely right, which is, this is about testing. And it doesn't mean down the road, we're going to ultimately approve the project. We're not going to, we don't owe anybody anything. Just because we test, uh, uh, and conduct the investigation, we have every right as a council to say, no, because it's not our money that's being lost in the investigation. It's theirs. So we don't owe anybody anything. And in fact, I think it's kind of irresponsible not to test. Because i- if the Coastal Commission in and of itself requires testing and investigation, if you want to do anything, I think that tells you something about what needs to be done and how stringent the Coastal Commission looks at this to require this kind of testing. And so, um, I mean, ultimately, look, we've had that site for years, and we have, you know, been questioning whether or not that's ever going to be developed, and we've not really had an answer. And actually, I see this as an opportunity to get that answer, to finally come to the conclusion based on evidence. Is that site suitable for building something? Is that site, um, after conducting the test, we're going to have an answer, and we're going to, we might even be able to put this to rest. So if it comes back that that site is not suitable, then we're done. And we don't really need to go through this analysis again, and we'll have the answer for any future developers who want to come in and develop that site. I mean, we can't make a decision based on speculation about what could happen when we don't have the testing done to back it up. We can't just assume that, um, there will be some kind of avalanche or some kind of erosion because we think it might happen, because we're afraid it might happen. Those are all valid concerns. But I would think you would want some evidence to back up your hunch or your feeling or your thought that it could happen. And what we have before us is a chance to get some confirmation of whether or not this is a feasible site for this project or any potential future project. We will, if we do this two-week testing on private property, where no, uh, public access will really be impacted, because it's going to be within the corners of that square. I, I just can't see, um, I, I see more benefit to us to do the testing than not. And, and again, what we're deciding tonight is not whether or not we're going to approve that retreat. It's whether, all we're deciding is whether or not we're going to approve the testing of that site, and that's all we're doing. If, if I were to vote yes on the testing, that in no way, and means that I'm approving the site if it comes back a, a good test. I mean, I, quite frankly, I'm not all that sold right now on a, on a retreat being put out there. But I, I, I think we all need to be open-minded about, uh, what we're going to do if that testing does come back favorable. And maybe we have our own ideas. I don't know. Or maybe the, the presenters tonight can fully expand on their project, and then we can have the community input, and then we can ask more probing questions at the time because we'll have more evidence to base our judgment on. So this, this has been vetted by our planning commission. They've recommended moving forward with the testing. We're not paying a dime for this testing. Is the testing process going to last two weeks? And it will give us the answers I think we've all been wanting to have, which is, what are we going to do about that site? And so I, I just don't want us to make a decision based on some fear or feelings or concern when it's not backed or feelings or concern when it's not backed up by hard science or evidence. I, I, I really think we have to have, um, that before us before we say, hey, no, on something as important as this. In fact, I think it's, it, it's incumbent upon us to find out. And so, uh, I'm inclined to, uh, be in favor of, of moving forward with just the testing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm going to be cheering for your comments, um, on this item. Appreciate your consent on that. Are there any other comments on, with this particular item?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'll rebuttal if I can.
Go ahead, and Councilmember.
Thank you so much. Uh, you really make a convincing, uh, argument regarding the moving ahead with testing. I was primarily concerned keeping that land as pristine and as a place to go in its natural state. However, I do understand the fact that we can do something on that site to make it better for our community. Maybe even bigger homes or something that the community can use. So with that said, uh, I agree with you on the, uh, it's not going to cost us anything, but rest assured, very difficult for me to approve any humongous project down the line. Uh, even if we did have this testing because again, Mother Nature and the pristine nature of what is here, uh, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Sylvester, for your additional comments. Any other comments at this time or else I entertain a motion to, the recommended action from PONICS, uh, our PONICS staff. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I, I will make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to, I have a second. If there is no second, I will second that. So at this, uh, point, uh, do we, we need a roll call vote, uh, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, we need a roll call.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
No.
Dr. Rod?
No.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much, everyone, for the robust discussion and I want to uh, let everyone know that this, as mentioned earlier, does not mean that there is uh, this, a project approved. It's really the approval of geotechnical, study on this. And to be very clear to whoever's listening, understanding that there is no project approval. It's really, um, studying whether or not there is a feasibility. Um, so I want to thank all the staff on the work on this and also, um, uh, the guests we have this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we are now moving on to item number 11. Um, just checking in with everyone. Everyone okay? Can I keep on moving or anyone need a break?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, let's keep on moving. Okay, item 11 is the approval of the duplex at 1679 Annie Street. The use permit UPR 10 dash 20 dash 14745 and design review dash 10, what's the, 10 dash 20 dash 14746. And we have staff member, uh, Michael Van Luken to, um, share with us this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council, this is a use permit and design review to construct a new two-unit building at 1679 Annie Street. Planning commissions reviewed the project and it's now before the City Council for consideration. Again, uh, the project consists of a new two-story building. Uh, there's existing single-family home on this lot that would be removed and replaced by the duplex. The combined square feet of the duplex is just over 2,500 square feet. The proposed duplex design is again two-story. The first unit would occupy the, um, rear approximate half of the first story at about 900 square feet of habitable area. Unit B would be larger at about 1,650 square feet and would occupy the, the entire second floor of the, uh, building. The lower unit would contain two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a living room and a kitchen. And, um, yeah, that's, uh, essentially the, uh, proposed construction. The project's located on the east side of Annie Street, just north of Pure Street, which is generally speaking southwest of City Hall here in that neighborhood. This is a photo of the existing home that's situated on the lot. There are some guy wires that would have to be relocated with, uh, direction from PG&E to allow the construction because the project driveway would essentially be in this area. This is a condition of approval. But in fact, let's go back a little bit there. There's a Republic Services Corp yard that's, uh, adjacent to the subject, uh, lot. And a concern of ours has been some of the noise that would be impactful to the new residents of the duplex. The city staffs recommended a condition of approval that a new, uh, CMU or similar type wall be constructed between the two uses. That would be at the expense of the duplex builder. And they've agreed to this condition of approval. So there'll be a solid wall that actually is between the corp yard. There's no trash or anything, uh, stored at this facility. It's just essentially a maintenance of service vehicles, garbage trucks essentially. And we wanted to just point out that there would be that sort of a concrete wall between them, between the two uses. This is the site plan of the proposed duplex building. Concrete wall would be approximately here where my mouse is. And the building, uh, again occupies about 55% of the lot. There's a deck on the backside that would serve both, uh, units. There's a, uh, four-car garage or a two-car garage, rather. Um, here's the floor plans of the units. This is unit A on the right-hand side, unit B, the second story on left-hand side. It's a two-car garage and a two-car driveway for total parking spaces as required by the zoning ordinance that would serve the duplex building. These are the elevations, the drawings that show what the building would look like from the front and from the north, uh, side, the left side. Again, two-unit construction, contemporary-type architecture. There's a, a roof deck that's proposed. This is the right side on the top that would face the Republic Services corporate corp yard. And then the west elevation, um, which is the left side. This provides the council probably with the, the best understanding of what the building would look like. Again, it's a tech contemporary architecture, rural design. Uh, we actually have no amendments to the project architecture. Um, the architects done a very good job of using color, materials, um, architectural details to, uh, provide what we think is a pretty good-looking contemporary building. We have no issue with it. Recess garage door, recessed entry. It's overall a very attractive building. The project's exempt from CEQA. And again, the project went to the planning commission and it's before the City Council tonight for confirmation of the planning commission's approval of the building. If there's any questions, the staff's here to answer them as well as the, uh, project owners, uh, also present.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Um, the, I guess that one question I have is, I do see, um, the duplex, but, uh, where, where is, is, did they use up all of their backyard?
Um, well, the existing building would be torn down on the lot and, um, the new building constructed, but there, there would be a pretty sizable backyard still that would be available to the occupants of the duplex.
Oh, got it. Okay. And then, and then, um, how many parking spaces does this have? I'm sure you stated that as appropriate.
There's two parking spaces in the garage. And, um, it's notable that the garages for duplexes have to be 20 feet wide as opposed to the normal 17 because, uh, sometimes the occupants don't, one car might belong to the downstairs unit and one car may belong to the upstairs units. So the zoning ordinance has something built in that requires a 20-foot wide garage space. So to answer your question, there's two in the garage and two in the driveway.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions for my colleagues about this project?
Madam Mayor, just a real quick one.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Michael, do you mind going back to the, like, the, the very beginning where they do the A and the B? Like the, you know, the, when you first showed it for the, oh, there we go, the two-story. Okay, about the square footage. Okay, and then the, the slide that shows the, um, shape of A and the, uh, B? Yeah, there we go. Yeah, and then the one prior. Okay, the shape and stuff. How many bedrooms is this again?
Uh, let's see. The lower unit would contain two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a living room. I believe the upper unit's similar. It might be a three, the, the downstairs may be two bedrooms actually, and the upstairs may be three bedrooms.
So there's no way that, yeah, there's no way. So that's, that room is almost taken care of. There's no way they can make it and make it more, right, on their own?
No, no, this will always be.
Yeah, it didn't look like that. Yeah, they can't really do that. I mean, if it's a applicant, but a, a single-family, um, this is probably the closest I've seen to a real duplex, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is a bona fide duplex. Sometimes we get into with the three-story duplexes. They'll associate the first floor area with the duplex on the, on the middle floor.
Yes.
Kind of sticky issues with that. That's not present in this case. It's only two-story.
And thank you very much. I appreciate the clarity on it. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, Councilmember Di Giovanni. Uh, any other questions for my colleagues? Seeing no questions, um, oh, Councilmember Sylvester, I see, it was a hand raised right there?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor. I was ready to move forward with making a motion to approve, but I didn't know if we could open it up to, uh, public comment or anything like that.
Uh, I, I, let me ask Stephen if there's any public comment on this. Stephen, are, is there any public comment before we proceed?
There is not.
Thank you very much. So that is the answer, Councilmember Sylvester. Uh, you go for it. You, I think you said you're, uh, willing to make a motion.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you so much. Make a motion that we move with item number 11, approval of duplex at 1679 Annie Street.
A second?
And now we have a second. Um, and at this point, um, and we have a full comment.
Aye. Uh, Glenn Sylvester, aye?
Madam City Clerk, we can't hear you at the moment. Are, are you doing a roll call?
I am.
Can't hear.
We, we didn't hear and, uh, we, we just kind of muffled, so.
Thank you. Uh, so is Ms. Di Giovanni there?
Yes, aye.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Um, that, or, uh, or it was, that passed, or the resolution has passed. Um, and now we are on item number 12. Thank you very much, Mr. Michael and, uh, team. Now we have the approval of the written response to the 2019, 2020, civil grand jury report, the second E, on second unit, adding new housing in neighborhoods. Oh, and don't go very far. It's, uh, staff member, Michael, again, presenting. So you have the floor.
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, we don't have a, a PowerPoint presentation on this. Um, but essentially what the City Council is looking at with this item tonight is that in October of this year, the San Mateo County Grand Jury issued a report titled Second Units Adding New Housing in the Neighborhoods, um, to all of the cities and the unincorporated county, um, for, um, the submission of comments back to the grand jury , um, related to specifically the creation of accessory dwelling units. Um, the council probably aware what those are, but if, uh, if anybody's unclear, um, we call them ADUs. Um, there's been recent legislation that allows the construction, um, of ADUs, um, by right, some are even detached. And, um, sort of liberalizing, if you will, the construction statewide of ADUs. And the county is gathering facts about how, uh, each of the cities and the unincorporated counties are coming along with facilitating ADU construction within each of the communities. And there, uh, is an attached response, uh, that accompanied the staff report. I will go through that in detail. If there's any questions about it, we're more than happy to answer those questions. Um, but essentially that's, that's what's going on here. Um, it's a response to the grand jury about the ADU construction throughout the county. That's sort of the flavor of it. Daly City's had a very robust, uh, used to call them second units, now called ADUs. We've had a very robust program since the 1980s. Um, there is no, uh, shortage of ADU construction in Daly City. I can assure you of that. And we did, I think, 80, uh, ADUs last year and may do more this year. So, um, we're doing well, um, but still had to answer the questions in the report.
Thank you very much for that. Um, I, we have the report, um, in our packet. So if there are no other questions regarding the findings and in regards to the ADUs, um, new housing in our neighborhoods from my colleagues, at this moment, I asked, uh, you, uh, asked, present your questions and yes, Councilmember Sylvester, um, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, oh, uh, thank you so much for, uh, bringing it further up. Kudos goes to you as well. Uh, again, I'm a proud member of HARP and we, uh, expended money for that to assist, uh, in the creation of ADUs by providing, uh, pre-formatted, uh, diagrams so that if anyone is interested, uh, uh, they're coming to Daly City. They haven't already done so, so that it makes it much easier. But I'm proud to hear and I'm very happy to hear that we are addressing the housing crisis the best that we can. And kudos go out to the homeowners who decide to, uh, put in an ADU, uh, within city code and, uh, and, and et cetera to help, uh, um, housing. So thank you so much. That was just a comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a, maybe a silly question to Michael. How does one get, if one were to purchase an ADU, a prefabricated ADU, how do you get that into your backyard?
Well, usually, uh, uh, the, the prefabs are delivered in components and, um, they're, they don't come with all four walls connected. My, is my understanding is that each wall would be carried through probably the side yard or maybe even through, you know, the garage. It is a, it is a tricky thing. Because this is going to be a. Because this is going to be a product that we see more of in the future, the prefab.
Yeah, because some, I thought I saw or heard someone mention that they would actually helicopter it over. Do you know if that kind of thing has been done?
It hasn't been done, to my knowledge, in Daly City. We've only had a few detached ADUs approved. A handful, because this is a new allowance in the last couple of years. None of those that I've known of have been delivered by helicopter.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Along with that question, pardon me, Madam Mayor, how about those containers, cargo containers? Have you seen any of those, Mike, being lifted in by crane?
Not for an ADU. We have a home that was approved using those, the first, to my knowledge, in Daly City. Maybe six months ago. Now it's pre-COVID, probably getting closer to a year ago. But anyway, not, not an ADU, to my knowledge.
Yeah, I guess that might, that's my question. How would you get that container in the backyard? I'm just fascinated by the logistics of it.
Yeah, by crane, or, yeah.
Well, Councilmember Buenaventura has a big backyard. I think he'd probably put a couple of them back there.
All right, maybe that's why he's asking.
Thank you so much to my colleagues, and these are important questions, and really. Around the feasibility and importance of ADUs in our community. As we know, this is to address. Kind of the housing shortage that we see in the area, and, and that ADUs have been. Something that both locally in our jurisdictions and also statewide has been an initiative to combat. The housing crisis we all see. So thank you to the staff. I think at this point, I mean. It, you know, the recommendations and findings here. We, if there's no other questions, I think let's move on to. A recommendation or a motion to approve this Grand Jury Report and the findings. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the approval by the number 12, the approval of written response to the 2019. Grand Jury Report.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. I, I have. First, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember D. Giovanni, and so at this point, we have roll call, please.
Miss, Mr. Sylvester? Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Hi, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Thank you to staff, and I think we are, and everyone's, our ADUs are.
And so now we are moving on to item number 13. Ordinances, second reading of the ordinance 1441, repealing and replacing chapter 8.32. Of the Daly City Municipal Code Regarding Illegal Dumping and Littering, and we have. City Attorney Zimmerman, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. This item came before the City Council at the last regularly scheduled meeting. For introduction, it is before you this evening as a second reading and for adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you so much, and so at this point, we will just need a motion to adopt the ordinance. Of the second reading. For the repealing and replacing chapter of the 8.32 of our Daly City Municipal Code. Regarding illegal dumping and littering.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Buenaventura, a second by Councilmember Sylvester. You have roll call, please.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Hi, thank you very much. That ordinance passes, and I know this is something very important to our community. Around ensuring that we have clean spaces and, and really. Needed to update that municipal code, and I know a lot of work has been put into this. And now it's officially adopted, so thank you very much, everyone, from staff to my colleagues. I'm moving this forward. Please.
I'd like to concur with you. Kudos to Leilani Ramos for working on this, the rest of staff. The Police Department, Code Enforcement, Public Services, and also to Madam Mayor for at the. Recommending a change in the acronym, and we changed it to clean. So thank you, and thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmembers Sylvester. As, as you always did, that's what Daly City is about, working together and really teamwork. So amazing work, everyone. Thank you so much. And now we are at public appearances and oral communication. Look at that, we're at the bottom of our agenda. And so now I'm asking Stephen if we have any public appearances or oral communications on, nothing that is on our agendas. On this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have, let me just double check, I have two comments to read. Okay, the first is from Mikio Akima, and it says, "Good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you for taking the time to hear my comment today. My name is Mikio Akima, and I am a youth leader specialist for the Daly City Prevention Collaborative at Thomas R. Palacida. From the Japanese Community Youth Council. I am here to address the issue of secondhand cannabis smoke in multi-unit housing, specifically condos. The Daly City ordinance to require multi-unit housing to be smoke-free does not apply to condos, resulting in youth living in condos being exposed to secondhand smoke, which can be extremely harmful and dangerous to developing children. The students I have had the opportunity to work with have already expressed concern regarding their health while walking around their neighborhoods, and oftentimes are forced to cover their mouth and nose. Over their masks when crossing individuals that choose to smoke in their communities. I'm asking that you reconsider the smoke-free ordinance to include condos in the hope of promoting a safer and healthier environment for the youth of our community. Thank you for your time today." The next comment is from Patricia Diaz. It says, "Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Patricia Diaz, and I am a sixth grader, sixth grader at Thomas R. Palacida Middle School, member of the Daly City Prevention Collaboratives Group. I am a resident of Daly City, and I feel strongly that Daly City's ordinance requiring multi-unit housing to be smoke-free should include condos. I understand that all other cities in San Mateo County include condos and their smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinances, so we should too. Through our youth group, I learned that secondhand smoke and even thirdhand smoke is extremely dangerous. The smoke can come in through the shared walls and vents, it can cause asthma and put toxins in the air, which lead to coughing and sore throats. I wouldn't want me or my family to be exposed to these dangerous chemicals. Please consider adding condos to our smoke-free housing ordinance. Thank you." The next comment is from John Baker. It says, "Congratulations to all, especially Mayor Manalo and Vice Mayor Dos Macwall. As someone who represents part of Daly City as a member of the SS, South San Francisco Unified School District Board of Trustees, I'd like to express my appreciation to be working with a great team like the City of Daly City's Council and Management. Happy holidays and here's to a better 2021." The next comment is from Shaquille Ali. It says. "Congratulations to the recently elected City Council. I am truly grateful to, to and for all the people who donated to my campaign, voted for me, and volunteered. We kept our campaign positive and clean, and your voices did not go unheard. Over 10,000 Daly City voters have spoken and said that our issue-based campaign focused on food security, housing, better government transparency, and enhanced youth services is what a huge portion of. Daly City citizens support. From the people and for the people meeting their basic needs, this will be an ongoing, organic campaign, and I commend you all for taking the first step. Many of those who voted for me were first-time voters, and many were people who have not voted in years. We may have not won this battle, but we are winning the war. We are winning the war for a more democratic process. In San Mateo County and specifically Daly City. Thanks again, Shaquille Ali, the governing board president of the Jefferson Elementary School District." The next comment is from Francesca Lomotan. Says, "Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Francesca Lomotan, and I am with the San Mateo County Health Tobacco Prevention Program. Our office maintains a hotline and email that residents can contact to report secondhand smoke exposure. One of the issues that residents contact us about is secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing. Daly City has an ordinance that requires multi-unit housing to be smoke-free, but the ordinance does not apply to condos. We have received complaints from residents that they are experiencing secondhand smoke, including cannabis smoke, in their condos in Daly City. In San Mateo County, all the jurisdictions that have smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinances include condos. Daly City is the only jurisdiction, jurisdiction does. Excuse me, Daly City is the only jurisdiction that does not do so. The American Lung Association gives grades to cities on their tobacco-related policies, and for the topic of smoke-free multi-unit housing, Daly City has received a B, as in boy. Grade because condos are not smoke-free. If Daly City would like to improve their grade, including condos in the existing ordinance would result in an A grade. Our office is available to provide assistance and answer any questions related to smoke-free multi-unit housing. Also for residents' information, our phone number for filing a complaint is 650-573-3777. Complaints can also be sent via email to tobacco prevention at smcgov.org. Please feel free to reach out. Thank you." And the final comment is from Mike Stansel from the Daly City Partnership. It says, "Wanted to give a brief update on the work we are doing. The Daly City Partnership is currently fielding 15 to 20 new applications for rental assistance per week. Partnership is serving over 1,000 units of food per week. These numbers were only, will only increase as the service sector is affected by the. SIP slash COVID restrictions. The eviction moratorium expiring will create an exponential increase. DCP and other Bay Area NPOs are expecting the demand for our services, food and rental assistance, to stay at current levels permanently. We are currently exploring all ways to ensure we can sustain our current operation while serving our neighbors as best as we can. Wishing all of you a safe and happy holiday and New Year." Mike Stansel, Executive Director, Daly City Partnership. And that concludes the public comment.
Thank you, Stephen, for reciting the public comment, and to everyone that turned in a public comment, thank you for your voice. At this point, I am now asking my colleagues if there are any appointments to any Board of Commissioners at this time.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Please, Councilmembers Sylvester, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a reappointment to the. One of our recipients this evening, Ms. Elizabeth Espinda, to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Wonderful. So I will second that. So we can do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much for your continued service, Elizabeth Espinda, on the Arts and Culture Commission. Any more appointments? Seeing none, we'll move on. I think, how many more, I do have a question for staff around appointment. How many more seats do we need to fill for the Small Business Commission? I know it's very important for us to move forward with that, and it's a question for staff. Okay, thank you very much. So if there's any councilmembers that need to do their appointments, please fill them. Or make your nominations, because it's a very, very important mission that needs to be filled.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say something about that, about the Small Business Commission, if I may.
Please.
I do think it's important that they start meeting. You know, because the situation with COVID and the impact on the businesses. It would, I think they need to meet right away and start to come up with hopefully some ideas. On what we can do as a community and get their ideas and get the input from the businesses to try to help them during these times, so. I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, and I know how these appointments go, sometimes it takes a while, but is it necessary that they, that we wait till all five? Members get on the committee, or can we start having them meet right away? Because. You know, I have some ideas that I would like to see if they would vet and start discussing, but. I just think time is kind of of the essence, and we really need to get these businesses going, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Buenaventura. I definitely echo your sentiment, most especially during COVID-19 right now. And I think that's a question for staff. I think we have four out of five that have been appointed, and so can business be conducted, starting, I think. I don't think they even meet monthly, I think, right? And so I think that the fastest we do get, get a meeting on board, then maybe they, as they meet, they, they will actually. Realize that they need to meet more so than less. But that's a question of staff. Can we start having those missions meet? There's one more question.
So the next scheduled meeting would be February 11th. We can meet because we do have a quorum now, so you would only need three appointed commissioners to have the first meeting. You know, I think one of the interests in having all five was so that we could do the training and orientation all together, get an efficiency there. So I think if we can get that final appointment at the second meeting in January, that would be plenty of time to have that February 11th meeting, so I think. We do have a meeting before then to hopefully get that full commission, and then we can get going.
I'm going to interject, though, in the event that there is not an appointment, is it the Council's direction to move forward with the Small Business Commission meeting in February, the first scheduled meeting, even if we only have four?
Yeah, absolutely. That's my, that's my report.
With all due respect, I'm the council member to our city manager. I'm the council member that is the one that doesn't. So if you're asking for a direction, you know, to be included in that as the direction that you asked. I am asking that because of COVID, sometimes it's hard to get in contact with some of the business owners at this particular time, because the mailing addresses do not match some of the contact information. And to my fellow colleagues, I would ask respect, as the same thing I would do with you. And if you cannot contact someone during COVID, it's very difficult, and if their business is temporarily closed down. That is another difficulty on reaching out to people. So I would actually respect and ask that at least give me until the thing, and I'm an elected member, ask for the respect. And thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Reciprocating. Thank you.
No disrespect trying to be given here. I think what is being said is that there is a need. And as you mentioned, with COVID-19, there are businesses that are suffering, as you mentioned, and that, that there needs to be a movement towards supporting them, and so. There is no intent of disrespect, and I just want to let you know. On my part, and I'm sure my colleagues either, it's more around getting the business done. And so here, my, another colleague that would like to say a comment.
If I may, you know, we've been waiting for quite some time to get this commission going. And I'm asking our planning folks to make all information available to Councilmember D. Giovanni. If they are a business operating in Daly City, they do have information on file with Daly City. And even if it means sending a letter out to them. However, COVID is indeed a problem. And one of the biggest problems is we need to get on board to see how. And one of the biggest problems is we need to get on board to see how we can provide resources and helping these businesses. So the intent of tonight on moving ahead, from what I've heard thus far, we will move ahead because we have a quorum. However, it won't last forever. I would make a recommendation at a later time, Madam Mayor, and that would depend on the rest of council that if we need to fill that fifth seat. We have, we allot some time and actually put a deadline, COVID or not. I think we need to move forward with a full board. So just as long as we provide all the resources for council member to get the information that she needs so that we don't delay any further. Thank you.
I recognize that's a great comment and to provide that information and resource for the council access to businesses that need or even the list of businesses that are in the supply. But I do think the February eleventh deadline is feasible. And I think ample enough time for us to move forward regardless of the I mean, February eleven, it's December fourteen, so I think that's more than suffice enough time to reach out to the community council member. So with that, I think that's in regards to appointments and and moving forward to ensure that they're able to support our small businesses very much. Any city council reports? Any of my colleagues have any city or council committees reports? Then, oh my goodness. Surprising. Usually everyone has a list. I know. It's a pretty long evening with our meetings started, starting earlier today. So are there any, there's no council committee reports? Are there any city council reports at this time? Seeing no city council reports at this time? Okay, moving on to our staff reports.
Well, it's been a long meeting, so I won't be late by this, but I just wanted to wish everybody have a happy holiday. We do have our virtual tree lighting this Wednesday online. We are going to be having a winter recess through January twenty-fifth. The next meeting for city council, regular meeting, will be January twenty-fifth. And so I also wanted to extend my congratulations to everybody that moved up as mayor and vice mayor and got reelected and just acknowledged everybody's hard work. All five council members have worked really hard this year, and I can't believe we're closing this year this way. But I'm, I think, on behalf of the city manager's office and staff, we're grateful for all of your leadership. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, City Manager Shana Mochi, and I would want to extend a thank you to your leadership and to all the staff here in Daly City. As you mentioned, I can't believe we're ending this year like this and how it has transpired with so many different layers of challenges. But yet, everyone here in all staff levels have continued to stay positive, give their all and really care for our city here in Daly City. And so to the staff, thank you so much. To my colleagues, thank you so much. This will be the last meeting of the year, and so we will see one another in meeting-wise in twenty twenty-one. And along the same lines of you, as you mentioning, the tree lighting that will be occurring. I also know that, you know, Pacific Islanders Together will be hosting their toy giveaway, of course, COVID safety-wise in the Bay Shore this Saturday, right? And then also the Operation Santa Claus that will be happening this coming week. So I mean, there's a lot of holiday festivities around ensuring that there is a light of hope and a love for our community. And I think that's just the resilience of what we've seen through our community members, through staff, and through what Daly City shines through. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, sorry about that. I forgot about a report.
Excuse me?
I can't.
Councilmember DJ Riley?
Yeah, I apologize. Yeah, I couldn't quite hear. I apologize. Is that okay to say to me?
Sure.
Okay. So I forgot about a report. I apologize. First, Dad, you know, we're in the middle of the holiday. I'm sorry, I can't hear. A city council report.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry about technology. Okay.
Terrifying. You forgot a city council.
Council report.
Yeah, council report. Because you're, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Apology for the delay. I just want to say that on the same note, when we were talking about the great things that are done in our city, that at the Winter Wonderland Frosty Fest that was held at Ceremony, that the recreation work together with Marie Valerosa at Ceremony for the kids, everything was socially distanced. They had the Daly City Police at the end with Ricardo Ortiz handing the bags. They had the Santa on the old fire engine, and then they would take a picture while the people were in the car. Just everything they did about it was fantastic. And then secondly, I just wanted to ask, even though I know we don't know what next year will bring and how the calendar falls out. Tonight is also Hanukkah, so if we can keep this in mind, we don't know about certifications about, I don't know if there's an election. I don't think there is, where if we can are to have our last meeting and keep those dates in mind for Hanukkah, it would be greatly appreciated. And wish everybody Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, whatever they celebrate. But this is like, I kind of like tried to bring it up last year. And here we are this year, but I know because of COVID that things were very difficult. So I really appreciate that. And I think the staff, everybody tried to work together on a date for this meeting. So with a lot of work to do, so I want to appreciate everybody and thank you very much for that and to the colleagues and to the new Vice Mayor. I wish you the best this year as you move forward into this position from council member to Vice Mayor, Dr. Rod. Because I know you show leadership in other areas in your life. So this is just another step away from that with you and the mayor on hand. So the best in twenty twenty-one. Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DJ Riley. And now, you know, for those watching, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy Hanukkah to all of you. We know that we're all trying to make the best of this season as you move forward and hope for the best for everyone. So thank you so much. And if there's no other, I know we were, I was responding to staff report. Was there anything else, City Manager, that I need to let the community members know?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. And so now let us move on to adjournment in memory, and I will yield to Councilmembers Sylvester at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, it's been said, twenty twenty-two has been a very difficult year. And this particular adjourned in memory, although I normally don't read bios, I have bios night. And since this will be our last council meeting, the sooner this year is over with, the better. I'm hoping for the best in twenty twenty-one. But needless to say, I'm sure the rest of council and staff and members of Daly City echoes the same thoughts and feelings of tonight. Okay, I first like to start off with Miss Carol Conroy. She was the Daly City resident for over twenty-five years. And as I read this, I didn't want to say, oh, yeah, I remember that name. Well, she was very involved in the community. One, she was a member of the Mission Merchants. Two, she was part of the Daly City Coma, Neighbor of Commerce. Three, she was part of the San Mateo County Event Center Board. Four, she was part of San Mateo P A L. She was also a trustee of Yeller Foundation. She was a postal executive in that she served as a postmaster in San Mateo, a postmaster in Diego, and she had fifty-five offices under her supervision. And she was an avid golfer and she was a Giants fan. So my to my boy. The next person I met in his family on a cruise that my wife and I took many years ago, and yet they live so close. I'd like to offer my condolences to Richard Nieto Dal Porto. Richard, with the nickname of Dick, passed away at his home on December fourth. He will always be remembered for his loving spirit and devotion to family and friends. Richard was born in San Francisco, the proud son of Italian immigrants. He grew up in the Mission District and graduated from Mission High School in nineteen fifty-six. In nineteen fifty-eight, he joined the Army Reserves and he worked for seventy-eight years as a produce manager. In nineteen sixty-one, Richard met Mary Ann Cowley in San Francisco. They were married at Mission Tanrafell on June sixteenth, nineteen sixty-two. They raised their children in San Francisco. His varied passions included being an avid sport, especially for the San Francisco Giants and the San Francisco Forty Niners, and working on cars and going to car shows with his two best friends from high school, Actin and Joe Musgrave. Richard's nineteen fifty-seven candy orange colored Ford that he entered and shows was his own special hot rod and stands as an example of his creative talent. Richard was the son of late Nieto and Edith Dal Porto. He was the brother of late David Dal Porto and brother-in-law of the late Sonia Dal Porto. He is survived by his loving children, Brian, Lauren, Michael, John, Victoria, and Sabrina. Grandchildren, Michael, Samuel Courtney, Ritter Giovanni, and Isabella, and great-grandchild, Lilian. Leaves behind his nephews, Stephen and Scott, his niece, Janine, cousins Anne and Bob, relatives in Luca, Italy, and his generous spirit will be missed by all who do him. The next one, I ask you to bear with me because as I read it, I really took this one to heart because, you know, it hits so good to the home. I'd like to give condolences to Jerome, wise known as Jim, Luzano Gacula. He was born September tenth in nineteen forty-six in the Barrios Fernando of Victoria, Tarlock, a province in the Philippines. He was a third of seven children to Patricia and Avino Gacala. At the age of five, his family moved to Mindanao to take advantage of a government share cropping program available, offered to farmers. It was during this time he acquired fluency in Ilongo and proficiency in Menoro. In addition to Elokano, Kapampanga, and the Gallic languages spoken at home. They eventually moved to Victoria, Tarlock. He showed academic promise as a young man and chose to stay in Tarlock with grandparents to complete high school while his family moved to Qaisan City. While he idolized his father and respected the honest farmwork of his family, Jim aspired to live a life of poverty. After high school, he attended the Technological Institute of the Philippines on a full scholarship, then transferred to the Institute of Accounts, Business and Finance at Far East University in nineteen sixty-five, eventually graduating in nineteen sixty-seven with a degree of Bachelor of Science in Commerce, majoring in accounting. And took great pride in being able to send himself through higher education without any financial assistance from his family, working both as a custodian and librarian at the school to pay for books and fees not covered by his scholarship. Upon graduation, he studied to be a certified public accountant, eventually passing on his first attempt at being certified in September nineteen sixty-nine. He then began a successful career in accounting that spanned from nineteen seventy to nineteen ninety-seven. Jim then sifted careers and earned his real estate license where he enjoyed being his own boss as a Realtor and assisting families become homeowners throughout the Bay Area. It was in nineteen seventy that his life completely changed as he required urgent medical attention at the emergency room at Far Eastern University Hospital in Manila and met a twenty-two-year-old graduating nursing student named Linda Sagun. And that provided care while he was hospitalized and would later become his wife, mother to his four children, Geraldine, Jerome, Melinda, and Joseph, and life partner for forty-eight years. They proceeded to build a life together, first in the Philippines and eventually immigrating to the United States in nineteen eighty-three to give their children better education and career opportunities. It was in Daly City where they first established their roots and they moved their homes to San Francisco in nineteen eighty-nine and remain there to this very day. Upon seeing their children succeed in their own endeavors and profession, Jim and Linda spent their remaining days together constantly at each other's side, gardening in the backyard, taking trips to buy fresh fish directly from the fishermen in Half Moon Bay and testing their luck at Cash Creek Casino and learning and traveling all over the United States and Europe as a devoted follower of ours. Jim dedicated his last few years assisting the ministry of Matea de la Rosa Church and his role as a knight with the Knights of Columbus. He is survived by his faithful wife of forty-eight years, Linda, their three remaining children, Geraldine, Melinda, and Joseph, sons-in-law Edward Ogas and Dennis Flashner, daughter-in-law Leia Angelus, his beloved granddaughter Isis Ordas, and best friend, Dog Bogey. His generosity, purity of heart, and dedication and love for his family were unparalleled. Jim will be missed tremendously by his loved ones, but never forgotten. He often shared with his family his dreams that where he spoke to loved ones, he lost throughout his life. So his family finds comfort in knowing that he was welcomed with open arms in eternal paradise. They know he is finally home, but they also know they're just a dream away from hearing his comforting, gentle laugh once again. Thank you all for taking the time to listen. This really meant a lot to the family. And I know it was quite long, but I think it's well deserved and thank you all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You have, I think, another person on your list that specifically under specifically under you, Councilmember Sylvester, there's another person specifically under you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor, and thank you all. Waiting for you to leave because they say family is very, very important. And you know, we as council, we consider all staff and their loved ones as family. It's been a pleasure, and I'm humbled to read this in honor, memory of Robert Thomas Piccolati. He was the brother of Department of Water and Waste Water Director, Thomas Piccolati. He was the brother of Department of Water and Waste Water Director, Thomas Picalati. Passed away on December 10th at the age of 51 due to complications from surgery. He was a lifetime resident of Pacifica. He graduated from Oceana High School and the College of San Mateo and San Francisco State University. He excelled in football at all three levels. He was employed by the Mid Peninsula Water District as an operator for almost 20 years. He will be dearly missed by his daughter, Brittany, 31, a childcare worker in the city of Pacifica, and his son Javier, 24, a law student at the University of Santa Clara Law School, and many other family, friends, and colleagues. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Goodbye, Sylvester. We extend our deepest condolences to the director of the community and his family at this time. We also have two more of our workers and staff's immediate family members. We have wastewater operator to John Brumley's father. And so Richard John Brumley. Also, we have DCPD Police Assistant, Trent Waterman's grandmother, Barbara MacEntee. We extend our deep condolences to the family members. As you mentioned, Mayor, our staff is like, we're a big family here and have sent the prayers and love to their families. And so at this time, I ask everyone to have a moment of silence prior to us convening this evening. Thank you so much, Thaddeus Gallow. This concludes our meeting this evening. Thank you all. And I hope you guys all stay safe and we'll see each other in the new year.
Madam Mayor, I apologize. There was one very short meeting for the housing agency. It shouldn't take too long.
That's okay. It happened to me.
It shouldn't take too long.
It's no worries. We will continue to our next housing and community development meeting. One last meeting of the evening. Thank you so much, Rose, for reminding us of that.
Sure.
Let me just pull that up. Is it on our side?
Yes.
I'm emailing it to you right now, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Like what council members Sylvester would say, if it's all night, it's all right. We're not, we're not at midnight yet and we're almost there. So.
We're almost there.
Thank you so much, Stephen. I received it. Okay. So thank you, everyone, for joining us. We're at the Daly City Housing Development Finance Agency Agenda Special Meeting this evening for Monday, December 14th, and I call this meeting to order. And at this point, we, we have roll call, please.
Ms. D Giovanni?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Present.
Mrs. Sylvester?
Present.
Very much. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 26, 2020?
Motion to approve.
May I have a first? May I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on to the next agenda of the item, change of officers. And.
You could just read that into the record, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So the mayor of the city of Daly City is hereby designated as chairperson and the vice mayor is hereby designated as vice chairperson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public appearances or communications? Stephen, I, there probably isn't.
There is none.
Take a hunch. Okay, thank you very much. And now the meeting is adjourned.
Yes.
Good night.
Thank you.